County Commissioners for our work session, we have Casey Witte, Fly Casper Alliance, Purpose, Sky West, M R G. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you? Good.
Casey, we have in front of us tonight the request for approval of the Sky West Quarter One and Quarter Two, two thousand twenty-four M R G. So you are invited here today to give us an update and talk to us about the program.
Well, you know, you had asked us to see if we could get more community involvement. We have four programs that we're working on right now. We don't have them solidified, but should have some news on those and then by the, at least by the end of April and which I think that will meet your want to see other involvement and participation from the community. I wish I could elaborate on those right now, but they're just not far enough down the pike, but they will be soon. And of course, I'll keep you apprised in between all that. In the meantime, we're talking to some individual groups over in Converse County. Those discussions also are early in their discussions, but people are listening and things. We continue to be excited about all the wonderful things that Casper has on the horizon with Ra Ra, the shooting complex. Next week, we have the N J C double A basketball tournament coming to Casper. Sports Ranch is getting geared up, and I think that there's a real possibility to get this M R G reined in fairly quickly once these things all get into place. And but I think it's really important that we continue to support it, like I have said for a long time, to see if we can get these things coming to fruition. You know, Casper is a very resilient community. We know that. We've seen that historically. And I think that as a community that's never had to pay an M R G until now, I think that we are well positioned to not have to do that for the long term.
Good. So I know I have been working on encouraging community members, both in the public and in the private sectors, to contribute to this. Things never move as quickly as you hope. We were hoping to get some clear commitments by this point. We don't have them. We do have a, I think, some indications of interest. We have this request in front of us that the county's portion would be six hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars. And again, that's for Quarter One and Quarter Two, and we are almost at the end of Quarter One. We're going to be there here in a matter of days. One of the questions I had, maybe you can't answer this, maybe this is more an airport question, and it's to Glenn Januska, but but the state's contribution is four hundred thirty-three thousand or would be the projected amount for the M R G for these two quarters. And my understanding is that's forty percent, but in many other communities, it's a sixty, forty, not a forty, sixty. And can you speak just for a minute to why we're at a sixty, forty versus a forty, sixty, and what the prospects might be for switching that to having a state contribution of sixty percent?
The reason why we don't have a sixty, forty divided with the state is that we don't have a capacity purchase agreement. And there are certain qualifications that airports have that enter into those agreements with the state. I'm not clear about what all of those are. Casper hasn't qualified for those. I know that Glenn Glenn can much better answer this question than I am because can because it's very complex. But I know that he's working on getting as much state participation as he possibly can.
And knowing Glenn, he's probably given this a lot of thought and a lot of energy and effort over the years, but maybe he can get us some information on whether there's a snowball chance of getting that or whether there's a realistic prospect in the next year or so of of flipping that. I think that would be a fair thing, especially due to the fact that I think the numbers for the Neutrona County International Airport show a reach far beyond our county's borders. In fact, I know that more, I believe, the numbers show more than ten percent come from Converse County, and I know folks come from the northeastern portion of the state in Riverton as well. Do you have those numbers just at the tip of your tongue on what the maybe the commercial, commercial travel is, the passenger travel is from those other counties?
Can have it. I think Converse County is thirteen percent and Fremont County is slightly higher. I think they're like at fourteen percent, which is interesting since they have a commercial airport.
Right. I see Mr. Farley has joined you at the table. Hi, Mr. Farley.
Backup.
I just thought I would mention in your previous question that Glenn is currently, he's not here today because he's down in Cheyenne speaking with the State Aeronautics Board on that percentage. So he couldn't join us today. So hopefully he'll have some news today on them increasing that or staying the same.
Okay, good, good. Casey, I think your point is that we do have substantial travel from outside Neutrona County using our airport. So to me, that might be the part of a compelling case for for modifying that sixty, forty. Commissioner North.
Okay, we got those numbers. How many of those are actually flying to Salt Lake versus getting on United?
Well, those are all, I believe, about that. I don't think we have that broken down by airline.
I think that's something we would need to have. If we're talking about supplementing an M R G, we need to have that information on who's flying on United and making connections there versus who is flying to Salt Lake to make connections on Delta. Otherwise, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't hold any water. So, I mean, you can't, you can't really compare apples to apples. You can't compare anything if you're not looking at what those people are actually specifically flying out on. So.
Well, Commissioner North, I guess two different, two different things in my mind. One is numbers flying United versus Delta for purposes of looking at the M R G to support the Delta flight. But I think my question was more was was broader in the sense that, you know, with regard to state funding and whether we can switch it to a sixty percent state, forty percent county, would would I think the case to be made isn't just Delta and or United. I think instead it's, you know, looking at the importance of the airport to the state of Wyoming. So I agree that it would be good to have those numbers with respect to Delta in particular. But my point, and I think it is very relevant to know what the participation is from other counties in terms of our conversations with the state. And oh, go ahead.
You know, I think that that's something that is really valid because when you look at the heat maps, Casper has people coming from all over the state that use the airport, including the Jackson Cody areas, which is quite a ways away. Not as many, but a lot of people from Sheridan, Buffalo, Gillette, Douglas, Fremont County, that Riverton Lander area, and we get pretty heavy, heavy use. And also, when you look at the heat maps, you see how much use our airport gets bringing people from other parts of the country, all over the West Coast, but significantly on the East Coast and, of course, the Gulf States, which we would expect to have with the extractive industries. So our airport is really a significant transportation hub for the entire state and for the entire country to get to Wyoming for recreation, business, family, whatever people need to get here for.
Commissioner Frill.
Casey, I would like to know if it's possible, what the ridership, if it's increased, how much it's increased going to Delta. And the reason I ask that question is, we can all sit here and say, well, if Delta wasn't around, we still have United. And I'm not, my statements are not to throw United under the bus, but certainly what I have heard a lot lately are people that are using Delta because flights are being canceled, flights are being delayed, they're stuck overnight in Denver, all on the United end of things, that it's not the great gravy over there that everybody thinks it is. And so I would like to know if it's increased because obviously they're not using United anymore, they're moving over to Delta. So we can all sit here and say, United's great because we won't have to pay for them. But if I can't get on a plane, or I gotta pay an extra hotel room down in Denver because I can't get home, then that's a problem.
You know, we hear that a lot, too. We've run a lot of social media posts with Oil City News, which was something that you guys had asked us to do as well, to reach out to more of your constituents and to reach a broader group of people. And we get a lot of comments from people who are saying the same thing. They prefer Delta, it's expensive, but it's reliable. And they would prefer the United pricing over the Delta pricing, but they're taking a Delta. To answer your question, it's a little bit complicated because of the size of plane that changed. We are seeing an increase in ridership, but we haven't reached that magic number on that larger plane yet, which is, you know, that eighty, eighty-five percent. We're getting closer in terms of numbers of people who are flying in and out of Neutrona County Airport. We've increased about fifteen percent for the last two years since COVID. We were this past year, thirteen thousand passengers down from what our pre-COVID numbers were. I have no doubt that this year will match that or exceed it. So it'll be over COVID numbers. I know that that's not exactly specific to that Delta flight, but it just gives you an idea of the fact that, again, Casper's resilient, we're bouncing back from COVID, and and that's going to impact all of the flights.
Mr. Commissioner or Chairman, if I might, just a relatable data point for the M R G, the sixty, forty increase in flights is that sixty, forty is that there's, they have one choice. So one hundred percent of anyone leaving Riverton and using the Riverton Airport is flying United because that's their only choice, which then is how they decide that sixty, forty breakout is if you have one airline that they're subsidizing, that's the one that they're doing. So if you have any heat signature or you have any, anyone leaving from Riverton to come to Casper, it's either they don't like the flexibility of additional United options, or they are coming here to use Delta. So it's like Jackson and Casper are the only ones that are not on that, that, that scale. So.
With with to commercial.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Laird.
Just a couple comments and maybe a question. I used to prefer to to fly out, to go on Salt Lake and Delta. And then my wife, who is my travel agent, we don't, a lot of people plan things quite a bit in advance. Sometimes we don't do that. But she's told me lately, we, we couldn't get any flights out of Salt Lake. We could get to Salt Lake, but we couldn't get any flights out of Salt Lake. And I don't, so we just went on United. But what I'm wondering is, is if if I went out there typically, if I decided to go out there at six in the morning and get on the plane and and see how many seats were filled and how many would be empty, what would I be seeing on a, on those flights that go into Salt Lake?
I think it just sort of depends on the day. I think some days they're pretty full and some days they're more empty. I don't have a day-to-day count, so I can't tell you what.
You don't know which day would be the heaviest?
I don't know.
Is that information you could?
Oh, I'm sure I can get that.
Well, I just want to do my own little form of math because with how much we're giving them, I want to know, I'm trying to figure out how much per ticket are we really paying for? I mean, is it really, these are questions that are asked to me by constituents. The truth is, I don't want to see us lose an airline. I also, I also have trouble trying to explain this to our people, especially those who don't fly at all, that get in their car and drive to Denver and fly out of there. So it's really important, I think, for us as commissioners, at least for me anyway, to be able to say, there are so many people that fly out on these flights and fly in on these flights, and here's the number of live bodies from Casper, Wyoming, or the surrounding areas that get on that plane and then come back from, come back each night at, is it ten o'clock or something like that? Because everybody complains about the times. And I, I just feel like I just never understood those numbers. And then now that we're asked to pay whatever number we're asked to pay, a couple million bucks, that we're getting into real money now. And so then I hear, then I hear some rumor that even though we're subsidizing them, they're going to leave next year anyway. I hear rumors, and sometimes I just let them float by because that's what they are. But can some of those questions be answered presently?
I think, yeah, I think, I think so. I think that the bigger question for your constituents is what the flight brings to the economy and the community as opposed to how many people are on each individual flight. You know, I think that different times of year, you know, we've just, we're just leaving a slow travel time of year for Casper. We're entering one of the highest, well, we're in the middle of one of the highest travel periods. Typically, March is a very high travel period for Casper. You know, you've got a lot of sports tournaments and of course, spring break. So I think that while we can get those numbers, I don't know that they're particularly meaningful. I think that, like I said, the real number is.
Well, but it's meaningful to me. And then I can translate, I mean, I don't know how you translate how much money they spend in Casper, Wyoming, other than guessing. But but the other, the other one is, this is one that I really am concerned with, is I think the city should contribute money to this, obviously, for obvious reasons. And so I like the idea that state might consider paying sixty percent, but let's say it stays at forty and then there's sixty percent less. I think the city should pay half of that remaining sixty percent, at least that much. We would pay the other, they would pay thirty, we'd pay thirty, state would pay forty or whatever other good number we could get out of the state. I don't like what's happened to us recently through the governor's actions with respect to how it's going to affect Neutrona County. But has the city committed any money to this?
The city, it won't be addressing this until April.
So the answer is no, they haven't agreed to anything.
That's correct.
So I would, from my own personal viewpoint of this, I would like to put this off until we see what the city's going to do.
I don't think we can. I think Sky West, we've almost dragged them along for this whole six months. I get emails from Mr. Belmont at Sky West a couple times a week. I think that if we don't approve this now, they will leave because we've just dragged this on for months. We're almost at the end of the six months with, and they are flying at risk with no guarantee that they are getting, you know, get the M R G passed.
Do you, do you think there's, I always wonder about private business. This is one last thing. Just let me finish this.
You kind of had the floor for a little bit.
Give me just one last thing. This, I gotta get this right in my mind, Mr. Commissioner. So, so the, the, the company itself, most companies I know that would be losing this kind of money would leave because they wouldn't be getting any stipends. I don't want to see them leave, but I don't like being hijacked either. And I think personally, I think if we agree to pay this money, we'll get very little from the city. Now, if it's the city, I think the city has a duty to pay money. But I don't know how you convince them of that.
Commissioner North. Did you have a question there?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Casey, I don't, to be perfectly clear, nobody is disagreeing with the fact that it's important for us to have the airport here and what it brings to this county. So I don't want anybody to think any different of that. But that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is the M R G today. And that's the part that I have, that's the reason why I wanted a breakdown specifically. It, yeah, we know that the airport's important. We know that that, that is a big drawing point for our community, and it should be. But the fact that, you know, you say that you won't have any information on some of these other places until the end of April, and yet the county's got to put the, put our, our money where their mouth is to keep Sky West to keep flying in on one flight in and one flight out a day. And I just can't, the numbers just aren't adding up to me. I mean, every time that they come back, the numbers are substantially higher. And I've talked to most of you guys in here about this, you know, and it, you know, when we saw the, the amount that they wanted this time around, it was a lot higher, and it just keeps going higher. And in my opinion, I don't think that they really want to be flying in here for the Delta connection. I'm just not seeing that commitment. Now, I'm not saying that we don't need to get another airport or airline in here. Okay, so don't misunderstand that at all. I do agree with that. But I think this money would be better off spent marketing and going after a hard recruit for a different airline to come in here that wants to be here and will give us the service that we need. That's my personal feeling. If we want to do this, instead of throwing this money out towards Sky West so that they can make that one connection, I would much rather see it go toward trying to get another airline in here that's interested in being here and wants to be our partner and be in our partner in the long run. That's, that's my feeling on this. And so I don't think I've said anything that's, that you weren't expecting me to say. You know, I've made my opinion perfectly clear on this for a long time. But when you're talking about what the state's going to do for us and how they're going to do it, we don't have any answers yet. This, and I, and I do agree with Dallas. I don't think the city, the county should be footing this whole bill. Yeah, okay, this, the, the state's picking up a big chunk of it. But if we're going to benefit these other communities and we're going to benefit the city, and that's where the majority of these people are doing business, then I agree with Dallas that they ought to be footing a big chunk of this bill and not the county having to foot the entire amount for.
Commissioner Frill.
The only thing I'm going to say is that, I don't know, maybe we should talk to the people at the city to be well informed, and then we'd all know that in April, they are taking this up, not by the end of April, but during the month of April. And we just can't say exactly what they're going to do at this point in time because they haven't had a chance to discuss it. So I think you're going to see the city's going to be involved. The second thing is, to make the comment, the city or that the county is going to foot the whole bill, they're not. If we all look at the paper here, it's a sixty, forty split. And the way I look at it, if the state of Wyoming is willing to put in forty percent of the money, the state probably feels that there's a pretty good reason why we ought to keep Delta here. So I'm in favor of this, and I think we should move on. I see things on the horizon that are going to certainly change this. And I know that there are things, it's not butts in the seat, so to speak, it's cargo in the, in the belly of a plane that can take care of this problem. So I'm not really that concerned about it. I think that you're going to see the city come through with something. And once again, I'll point out, if the state didn't think this was important, they wouldn't put their money in, and then we'd have a reason to complain.
Commissioner North, I wanted to address a comment that you just said about getting other flights in here. I think it's important to remember that rural communities, like our community throughout the country, are serviced by regional airlines. And Delta or Sky West cert is a regional carrier for American, Alaska, United, and Delta. And we have to, to get to a sort of a tipping point in order for Delta to come in or American or Alaska as, you know, a big airline. And, and I don't believe that those airlines are charging M R Gs. But because, you know, and each of these airlines has a different agreement with Sky West, it's not a one size fits all. So we don't, you know, we don't pay Sky West for United to fly in here. But the Delta model in their contract with Sky West requires that. And it's not just our community, it's every single community that Sky West flies into on behalf of Delta Airlines. And so Casper's not being picked on necessarily by Sky West. You know, when Mr. Belmont was here, he, he said in this chamber that they didn't want to leave Casper. They like their relationship here. It costs them money to have to move and establish a relationship with another airport. So they are very serious about staying in Casper, and they've given us a lot of things to help keep them here. You know, they've given us marketing money, which we're using. They've worked on the scheduling. Right now, the scheduling isn't great. They don't set the schedule for their flights. Delta does. They're working with Delta. Glenn is working on it. That's something that Fly Casper Alliance does. That's the airports and Glenn, and Glenn is working on that. He's very aware that people sometimes have problems booking flights further than Salt Lake City. And so a lot of these issues that the community has are being listened to, and we're trying to get those resolved. But some of those aren't like Casper Alliance things. There are things that Glenn works on, and he's very good at doing that. He's, he's, he's on it. So I just wanted to address that, that it's not that easy to just go out and use the money and, and try to solicit another airline carrier to come in to Casper.
Casey, my turn. We have about a minute left. You've brought some other people today. Mr. Farley's at the table with you. Do you have anything else you'd like us to consider? If anybody else want to say anything?
I'd say really quickly, if you want to do some quick bar napkin math on the numbers that are provided to you and the usage of the Delta, is you take that percentage that is using the flight, multiply that by seventy-four, which is the capacity of that airline. Anything over fifty is growth because we only had a fifty-seater come in here before. So just to give you some ideas of the number of people that you were alluding to earlier.
Mr. Chair, County Commissioners, County Staff, thank you. So just a few things. Casey alluded to Sky West servicing a lot of the other airlines. So that's something I think that's important to stress. While the city hasn't invested money towards the M R G, they have invested money to actually market the flight to drive down the M R G. So I think it's important to note that they actually do have skin in the game. And we've utilized that via Fly Casper to promote inbound and outbound flights via the Delta flight. And then Visit Casper, we've worked with influencers from the Salt Lake area to educate Salt Lake residents on why it's important to visit Casper. So from a marketing perspective, that has been done. And I would like to, I guess, highlight the study that was done by State Aeronautics, I believe, and the return that they saw from a generation of every dollar invested, eleven to one. So this is not a negative investment. This is an impact that goes through the entire community. And just from the optics of what we have from a tourism-related, for us to try and generate conferences, events, and lose an airline, that is a very difficult optics for us to overcome. And somebody sees that you pull out, those negotiations would get even tougher. So I use an example of where I came from in Dubuque, Iowa. They lost three airlines within a span of two years. They are now trying to scramble and get airlines back in. Their county and city spent upwards of a million dollars for an M R G, six months for a boutique flight, two days a week. And that's not what I want Casper to turn into. So and this isn't uncommon for other markets who are trying to get airlines back in their area.
Thank you. You know, I think the entire commission, and I'll speak for Commissioner Millen on this as well, because I've visited with him very recently about it. We recognize value in the, in the Delta flight, whether that should be borne by, whether the cost for that value should be borne by. Whether that should be borne by, whether the cost for that value should be borne by the county, um, I think we're probably all in agreement, the five of us, that it should not be. Um, in fact, I know that to be the case. Um, personally now, I would say that it's gonna become harder and harder for me to support this if we don't get, um, substantial assistance from beyond the, in the Trump County. Because you can tell us, and I agree that if it's eleven to one or whatever it is, but the return on investment is great. But I'm not thinking that a lot of those dollars go into the county coffers. And that's the problem. And so, in my mind, personally speaking, I have an expectation, not a hope, that the city and maybe private businesses will participate in this substantially and materially. And, and so, I, I just think that, um, there might, there may, you know, be an okay on this one. I'm, I'm not sure. We're not voting on it right now. But I'm not sure where you're gonna land if you come to us next time with, with anything similar to what we're seeing, either in terms of the numbers or the hundred percent of our sixty percent share. So, um, thank you for coming in today.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, just briefly, just briefly.
How brief?
My, my understanding is, is that the city might do something, but they have to take it into a budget session, which is in April. So, I would like to see Sky West say, okay, gentlemen, why don't we wait until you have to make a commitment, until you see what the city's going to do? That's what I'd really like to see happen. And I would put that on you guys to do that. Because I, I, I'm a commissioner. I, all of our, all of the commissioners, I agree with everything the chairman has said, basically. I just like to know what it's gonna cost us. Now, if it's gonna cost us this whole amount and the city says, well, we're gonna give you twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, I'd like to know that now. But I can, I understand why that, why they can't give a commitment now because it has to be dealt with in their budget. And so, I'm good with that. I'm good with waiting. We're only a couple, three weeks away from that. So, are you guys telling me that, that they'll, they'll leave town in the morning if we don't agree to give them the money today? I don't like that either. I don't like somebody that would use that kind of a leverage. But I think the city should pay a fair share of this money. And if they end up, uh, saying they're not gonna do that, then we have a whole different line of thinking that all the commissioners are gonna be involved in about what they want to do here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Laird. You know, the only thing I, I add on the budget, uh, comment that you made is, I know, um, our budget process, um, isn't just one meeting and, and the funding starts. It's, it's, if it's part of their budget process, it could take, um, you know, who knows, a month or two. And then, uh, their fiscal year is the same as our fiscal year, July first. So, um, I, I think potentially they can give us some feedback on it sooner rather than later. But, uh, the actual, um, you know, funding may be some time away. So, um, one more comment, let's make it quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's just worth noting, uh, since it hasn't been touched on today, that the way this MRG works is, and I apologize, uh, because you all understand this. If we commit to a hundred thousand dollars and they meet their goals and we see the projected growth since COVID numbers, that money may not be touched. And if we make over the projected numbers for the minimum revenue, then we get a credit towards the next month. So, anything we do commit to, that doesn't mean that we're spending every cent of that. It just means that we're prepared to. So, at the end of the day, whatever we commit to, hopefully, twenty twenty-four still looks like in the coming six-month period, uh, something that is positive for not just the growth in our economy, but also positive in what this commission has committed to and what actually gets spent.
Very good. Thanks for, um, reminding us that it's a not-to-exceed, um, minimum revenue guarantee. All right. Um, thank you for coming in. Um, Coroner, uh, Whips is here. So, Mr. Coroner, come on down.
Thank you.
Ladies, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Bright-eyed and bushy-tailed?
Yes, yes. I'm not sure if you all would like to start or if you would like us to start.
Oh, I, I think we have a lot, a lot of ground to cover.
We do.
So, I'm gonna leave it to you guys to decide, um, in what order and where we, there's low-hanging fruit. And we're dealing with the hard, complex stuff and first while we're fresh, you, you decide.
Okay. I think what I'll quickly do is just go over, I guess, an outline for the conversation and what we feel, where decisions need to be or we need to receive guidance from. And the first one would be, and it, and it basically follows my very short and sweet memo. That's two pages. And how would you all like to either work with the coroner or administer the county program? That's one big question. The second big question, well, the second request we have is that we're able to draft a resolution for the disposal of the unclaimed remains that are, that have, that are there now. And that's twenty-two, about? Close to twenty-two and they've been there a while. And then, of course, we would need to receive some guidance and talk about what policy you all might be interested in and how that works with all the departments. That would need to go through the rulemaking process. That's why it's not presented to you as anything yet. And that's how we kind of see the outline of this. So, does, do you all have any guidance on how you want to administer the program? If you?
Well, well, let's talk about that. Um, I, I don't think we have the memo in front of us today. You emailed it to us about a week ago. Oops.
That's okay.
It'll, it'll be okay. It's not gonna run off.
I don't think anyone will take it.
I don't, nobody, don't let anybody slip on. Um, so, my recollection, and just to paraphrase, is that, um, it, it can't continue the way it's been operating. Is that fair to say?
That is correct. The statute says the commissioner shall, and at this point, the coroner, I guess based on a previous handshake deal, had been administering the program.
So, then your memo says that, um, even though there's mandatory stat, statutory language that we shall administer, that we can delegate to the coroner something, um, some scope of duties and operations. And so, then I started scratching my head, thinking, well, where do we draw that line? And, and what, uh, because, because I don't know what's involved. And maybe you can educate us a little bit so we can have a more productive discussion today in the administration of the program. Now, we've talked about it at a number of meetings and, and bits and pieces. But maybe not from a high level. This is what y'all would have to do. And then these are the things that you could delegate. So, uh, in, in order for me personally to say, yes, this is how we'd like it to be and this is what we'd like the coroner's role to be, subject to his approval and, and agreement, I, I, I just need a better understanding of, of what that administration entails and where we can draw the line.
Sure. And I think the idea be, behind our proposal was, and the coroner can speak more to this with the administration, that you all would hear from the coroner. The coroner would present to you, say, the bills and the information coming in. And then you all, of course, are, you're, you're making the final decision. But he can explain much better how the actual program works in reality.
Yeah. So, number one, I, I do not mind at all, just to make clear, administering this program since, for the most part, I'm knee-deep in it anyway, to some extent. Where the question arises for me is, within that program, number one, approving, um, somebody unclaimed indigency status. And number two, can I legally approve that and basically commit the county by signing invoices to that expense? And then, now, since the statute has passed, really, it's, it's a committal to the state, um, because we get reimbursed to that. So, what happens currently is, um, we have statute seven four two oh seven, which talks about unclaimed individuals when it's a case that I investigate. So, if it's a, if it's a coroner's case to begin with and, um, I don't get anybody to step forward and claim that person, then what statute says is that within five days of the conclusion of my investigation, I need to make sure that that person is buried decently. The second piece of this is, and this makes up probably ninety-nine percent of what happens is, is that it's not a coroner's case. It's not something that my office investigates. It's a natural attended death out of facility, out of a home, out of hospice, whatever the case might be, that ends up in the funeral home. And they can't get somebody to step forward, um, and claim the person. Or they won't claim him because of cost or whatever the case might be. And my involvement to that piece right now is they turn around and send me a deal saying, we wanna do unclaimed indigency status on this person. This is why we, we've done this background with the family or, or not. And, um, I in turn say, okay, um, we'll go ahead with with doing the, the unclaimed indigency status of, of paying the, the fifteen hundred dollars for them to do their work. And by doing that, um, basically, I'm making contract on behalf of the county, just like a family would if they were present in doing it. And we end up with those remains. Um, as I've told you in the past, when this happens, because I currently don't have any place to put somebody full body, I authorize cremation. And I'm, I've told you in the past, I'm the only person outside of family that can do that, but I do that. Um, and in the end, I receive the cremains, which are stored out at the county building. And that's kind of where they sit. So, um, what I would like to see, um, as far as policy, first and foremost, is that on that, um, task list, is that we have somewhere to go with people. Okay? Um, whether that be a columbarium in the cemetery where we can put remains, or, you know, a place to bury them. The cost is really no different. If I were to go out right now to the cemetery and get a plot and an open-close, pay the open-close fee and do a direct burial, then it would be, you know, for, for cremains. Cause they'll, they'll make room out there. You just buy the plot and, and you know, that the opening, closing, and I go out and just basically would put these people in the ground and put a marker on them and that's the way it goes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Would they be in a casket? Do you put them in the ground or you just put them in the ground?
So, the way that works is, is when you're, you're doing a direct burial, you don't need any of that. Basically, what you need is them to be in a disaster pouch, which is what I would use. They're, they're body bags that, um, are permeable, that we use in mass casualty, mass fatality events, I should say, um, that I have. And if I were to do that, I would basically take them out there myself to avoid costs of, of having funeral homes and everybody involved. And have, say it's in Highland, they'd go out and open up whatever plot was purchased. Um, we'd put them in the ground, probably with a marker in the bag, marker on top of the ground, they close it. Done deal. I also have the ability, being the county registrar in this sense, of creating transit and burial permits, which satisfies that. And being able to report back to vitals and to statistics, as well as their sextum there in the, in the cemetery, that this is where this particular person is at. So, it's on record. So, that's, that's kind of part one. We, we need to have something that says, this is what we're gonna do with them, other than take them out to the county morgue. The second piece of that is that, um, and, and as Lita and I have discussed and researched, I mean, if we go that route, let's say with, with full bodies, I mean, this is no different. We can make claim to the state and get reimbursed for that. And I just looked up costs this morning and basically, if I was to do a plot with them and an opening and closing, you're looking at fifteen hundred dollars. Well, that's the max amount that the state would reimburse us anyway. So, I mean, no matter what we do, the county itself isn't gonna be out any money. So...
Let me gather my thoughts. All right, it's some, basically, part one is, is we need to have a place. Now, I've talked to, to Steve, to Chairman Frill.
Yeah, I was just gonna invite Commissioner Frill to speak, but let's, let's do talk about that issue. Um, I think, I think, uh, we've got some ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, over the last, now, probably two weeks, um, I have had discussions with the city of Casper, with Carter Napier and Zalima at the cemetery. They are in agreement to provide a plot. Um, I did ask a question today if we potentially could get, uh, two plots, just in case we ever needed to expand. Um, but, but they are willing to, uh, donate a piece of land in Highland Park for a, um, columbarium? So, I went back to, uh, what, uh, Mr. Whips had given us several months ago, as far as the columbariums that were out there. And I did contact three different companies. Uh, one of the companies was, uh, uh, Premier, I believe it is. Yeah, Premier columbariums. Uh, they quoted me a price, it would be roughly fourteen thousand dollars for a forty-eight niche, um, columbarium. So, it is, uh, each one of those would hold two. So, it would give you ninety-six, it would give you room for ninety-six cremains. And I guess the question I had, it has been brought up several times, is that the ones you have in your possession now, how far do those go back? I mean, what amount of time has it taken to acquire that?
So, I don't know if I can give you without going back and looking at an exact year, but we're probably talking ten years, fifteen years. And the reason being is, is that in the past, the funeral homes kept them. They were sitting in their closets. And when we started this last year is when we had the funeral homes come in and say, listen, we're not doing this. We've made contract with the county and done these services and these cremains belong to the county. So, what happened is, is bustards at least, um, brought out what they had in storage and gave them to us. Newcomer had been sending them back to Kansas City to their corporate plot. They didn't go back and pull everybody out of their corporate plot and give them to us. But what they did do is, from there forward, both bustards and newcomer, from there forward, both bustards and newcomer, when we had an indigent, would bring out cremains. So I have basically a backlog of, let's just say, ten, that came from bustards that were in their storage, and then everything from there going forward.
So you have twenty?
I'm going to say twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay.
Not to interrupt you here, you know, but I can come back to the second piece of that that just came to mind about that whole thing, but that's probably for a little bit later on in the conversation, so.
So the columbariums that I asked these companies to give me a quote, and two of them I've gotten over the phone, one by email, but therefore, they will hold up to ninety-six. So if I'm hearing you right, we have twenty-two over a ten-year period of time, which is going to fill about a quarter of this up, so we should be good for another three decades, I would hope. Now, with that being said, in talking to the city, the city, and I might have brought this up last time, but the city at the same time has remains that are sent to them that somebody may have a plot here, so they send them via UPS, FedEx, whatever, because somebody doesn't want to drive out here from Florida and drop, you know, their loved one off, so they mail them to be to be buried. However, they also receive John and Jane Does that nobody knows where they came from, and where they belong, or whether they have family. So they find themselves in the same situation with not really having a place to put it. So the partnership between the city and county, the way we're looking at it, is they would give us the ground, and if we were to purchase a columbarium, then it would take care of the problem of you would have plenty of room to put these cremains in, and the city, if they were to get them, would also have room, and if I heard you right, we potentially could get reimbursed from the state to actually maybe pay this thing back off in the end. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, or how that would work.
No. So let me clarify just a couple of things, because the numbers are off. Bustards, for a long time, would take and put these people altogether cremains in a casket and go out and bury them. What I got back from them was just what they still had left after they transferred ownership sitting in a closet. We average fifteen to twenty unclaimed indigents a year. Okay? So that's what we're looking at. On the backside of this, you know, and again, this may be a little bit farther in the conversation, but I would like to see us give this stuff back to family if possible, because a lot of these cases are simply because the family couldn't pay, and avoid long-term reaching big numbers in the columbarium or whatever we do without cost, without having them pay us back, any of that kind of stuff. We go to this process and we end up paying, which we get reimbursed from the state, so again, we're not out any money. But if it's a situation where the family wants to have final disposition with that person and can do it in a religious, family-cultural type of deal, then I say so be it. It just removes a problem from us down the road. There's often been concern from the funeral homes, me, that this opens Pandora's box and that everybody would just use the county to pay if they know that they're just going to get their loved one anyway. But I personally believe that's not the case. I don't think we're going to have an epidemic of people doing that. I think that the families that are in this situation, or legitimately in this situation, and that's what we end up with. I don't think we're going to have a run on us of people saying, well, Criminy, if I can get the county or the state to pay for it and get them back anyway, then that's just what we'll do, and we create an environment that that's what it is. So I just don't think that's the case. So I would, I would like to, number one, go through what we have, go back, see if we have family, and see if they want them, and if so, get them to them. If it's one of these cases, which we do run into, where, you know, the person in question, you know, was the outcast, the family, nobody liked him, wants anything to do with them, and it's truly going to be ours no matter what, then so be it, then they go in the columbarium. And that's just kind of my piece on that.
So with that being said, the columbarium idea was simply for that reason, that you have a place to put them, and if you are able to find family and return them back to them, then that opens up a space for the next person that comes through that that you're looking for family, or they don't have family, but at least they have a final a final resting place. So I'll just hurry up and finish this. So I got a bid from Kyber, who also builds them. They were at nineteen thousand dollars plus equipment to set it. The first bid was at fourteen thousand plus building a foundation, but that that included the rental of equipment to set it, and then columbarium USA, she gave me a rough idea of five hundred to six hundred per niche, but, so you're looking at twenty-five to thirty grand through them. So the original one that we were given is probably the cheaper route of going. Now, with that said, I also talked to a organization in town that I was hoping would potentially donate to the cause, to potentially buy that columbarium. I'm not convinced that that's going to happen. Maybe a portion of it, but at this point, I'm just not a hundred percent convinced that that would be there. So I think we need to go back and look at this. We obviously have an issue. They don't belong on a shelf, in my opinion, and they need to have a place to go. This makes sense for the county and the city, because they would have a home in a cemetery, and whether they stay there forever, they go back to a family, it's better to put them inside of a columbarium than it is to sit on a shelf at a coroner's office. And to me, yeah, it's money, but fourteen thousand plus foundation, and you're getting land for free from the city is their portion of this. I don't, I think that's money well spent.
I agree. I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
I just need to clear something up in my mind. Let me just ask our coroner, when you say fifteen to twenty unclaimed indigents per year, but a lot of people who can't pay, what's a lot? Is it half of that, fifteen to twenty?
I'm going to say that it's probably eighty percent of it.
Okay. Commissioner Laird.
It's never been the issue of not finding family and having someone without me next to kin or estate, and that's truly the indignity piece. This is unclaimed, and traditionally, again, it's where you have someone that's on hard times, and so is the family, and they just can't come up with a three thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, whatever it is that the funeral home wants to take care of it.
Could you summarize our legal requirement?
Look for the commissioners.
Well, with respect to the statute that we're all talking about now, the unclaimed, if it's a coroner's case, the coroner has five days to provide a decent burial. If it's not a coroner's case...
It's the county's case, and it's people make an application to the commissioners for this assistance.
And there's two programs that we have here in Natrona County. One is the county program, that's what it's called, where it says shell for the commissioners. Another one is run through the Department of Family Services. So two different programs, slightly different requirements.
Same pot of money.
Right. That's weird. Same pot of money, but completely different programs.
So, so, well said, Mr. Coroner. My own personal opinion, better do what's right and do it as quickly as we can. And if this thing that Commissioner Frill is talking about is legal, falls under the parameters of the state statutes, and your belief that it's a fair and spiritual way of handling matters, I think we should buy it and put it where the city says, in their in their grounds, and we should go with that, and if people call up and say, we sure like to have my little brother's remains, I'd say, come and get them. I wouldn't ask them for a penny. I wouldn't go into all the detail. I just don't think that that's what we're all about here. Let's fulfill our legal duties and our Christian duties, and if we're not Christian, our spiritual duties, and get this matter going, as I think, as soon as we can.
And I do have cases where, you know, currently, and then I guess it's pending, whatever you guys decide here, where I do have people come back and say, whether it's through the resolution of the stated later date, or the family just comes back and says, I've come up with the fifteen hundred dollars. And it's like, okay, give it to us, and I'll get you your stuff. I've got one right now that I'm going to pull out of indignity because the daughter out of Texas is like, I want my mom. Okay, I'll figure out a way to ship her to you. You send me the check, and we'll go from there. I would like to be able to offer that up without saying, send me a check.
That's what I...
And just do it.
That's what I was going to comment on. I don't want to say that. If they want to donate fifteen hundred dollars, let them do it. But I don't want to be saying, we'll send you your mother if you give us fifteen hundred dollars. I don't think that's Natrona County way of doing things, personally. But if they, I would say, yes, we'll send them to you, and if he says we have the money, I'd just say, if you want to make a donation to this program, that's fine, but there's no requirement that you pay, because there isn't any requirement that they pay, that I know of.
No, there is anything by statute. Now, other counties
Well, I don't care about...
Have those policies, but they have those policies basically predating what happened with the state.
Well, they're not binding on us. What I'm trying to get out of it is what, how we should do it. I'm only giving my opinion. When I'm one of five people that would believe that we shouldn't say, send us the money, we'll send you, and I don't think you're comfortable with that. I'd say it'd be more comfortable if they have the money, you'd like to make a donation to continue the program, we certainly would accept that. And that's personally what I think we should do, in my heart of hearts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Coroner, Lita, what what policies and practices do we need to have down in writing in order to just deal with the indigent cremains? And maybe it's a memorandum of agreement with the city as well. But we have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and... You have a big policy manual. I haven't committed it to memory. Our office and your office probably ought to have another memorandum of agreement. And so just this little piece right here, it seems simple and straightforward, and I think all the commissioners would prefer to do something different and more respectful than maybe what has been done in the past. But how do we move forward? Commissioner Frill's had some good conversations with the city. Sounds like we're getting close to a meeting of the minds there. I think there are some things that we'd need to clear up with the city. I'm not sure if you've heard back on whether we're going to have space for two or just the one.
Mr. Chairman, we had that conversation today, and he is talking to Zalima to see if they can get a big enough piece of ground for two.
You know, my hope is, is that one satisfies our community's need for an extended period of time. But if we're down the road five, ten, fifteen years, it seems to me that it would be most advisable to have the second one right next to the first one. So I'd like to see them together. I'm not sure if the fifteen hundred dollars per plot is equivalent to our fifteen thousand plus foundation, but I'm also not sure if the city would only have one or two of these indigent unclaimed remains per year versus our four or five, you know, so I'm not sure exactly how that works, but in my mind, at least I had the question to looking at the county's interests in this thing. So I don't know if you can address any of that, but it seems like you're hearing a consensus from this side of the table to do something, and that I think we've clarified this, and I think that we could come up with fifteen thousand dollars plus foundation costs in pretty short order. With respect to a program and administering a program, I think we have to confer with our clerk and look at this during kind of a budget session. You know, I think this program moving forward, and I don't know if this program moving forward, and these are these other issues that we're going to talk about, but I don't know how complex that is. But we're going to, somebody's going to be spending time, and so somebody's going to be paid for their time, whether it's your office or our office.
Right. I think honestly, Commissioner, that it might be just a policy for how this is dealt with, and if there's an MOU that says that I'm going to do it, that's fine, but there needs to be that backup, because if the next coroner comes in and says, I'm not doing that, then you're back to ground zero. So the administration of the program, like I said, as long as I'm in, is great. I'll do that as long as we legally, if I'm okay signing all this stuff and doing all this stuff. But I think we need, in the end, a policy that says, this is how the county's dealing with non-coroner cases that are indigent, and how that process works.
Chair...
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry. I was going to answer your question. One thought that we had was, until we can get everything figured out, a policy in place, all of that, that we would present a resolution to the board for the twenty-two cremains that have been there for however long. And then that would include, of course, we have to have some place to put them, so that would interplay with, say, the city plot, and that that's what, and I did hear the coroner say today that he would go back through those cremains and double-check, triple-check, maybe something's changed, but that was our thought going forward on the current cremains. But of course, we have to have some place to put them besides...
So if there's a resolution that says, now I'll get you an exact number,
Right.
Says we can make final disposition of this and any people, and it's okay for the coroner to go back and give this stuff back to family, if that's the case, and then going forward, here's what we'll do with them, take them out to the cemetery or whatever. I mean, there's your one, two, three steps, so.
Well, my thought is that with respect to those twenty-two or twenty-three that you have, that the commission could just say, yeah, if you can get them back respectfully to family members, you know, closer than to the moon, then we go ahead and do that. Is there any concern about that piece of it?
I don't have any concern. I think it's something that we need to get taken care of, and that we need to get the MOU signed so that Jim has the authority from the commission that we delegate that, so you can get that taken care of. I don't think anybody up here is disagreeing with that. I think that that's a unanimous concern about all of it, from all of us, that we need to move forward.
I'm sure it's probably legal to have an MOU where I'm, on behalf of the county, accepting or saying, yes, this is indigent or unclaimed, but then maybe fiscally, part of that policy is, is that instead of me signing, because this is probably where the real legal problem comes into play, is instead of me signing that voucher and approving it or whatever, you guys are signing the check when it's all done, but someone out of the county, via the commissioners, is actually signing that voucher.
Well, yeah, and I think you're right. I think that you can move forward. If you want to have multiple resolutions, fine. Maybe you can bring to us at our next meeting a resolution just with respect to those twenty-two, and that we authorize the coroner and his office to return those as he deems fit. But we do need this agreement, memorandum of understanding with your office, and we need one with the city, I think. So let's, I think we need maybe a drafted resolution for one or more of those pieces, or a draft MOU to take a look at. Commissioner North, I don't know if you got to say what was on your mind a few minutes ago or not.
Well, that's that's basically what I wanted to do. I wanted to just make sure that we've got. What you need so we stay in legal compliance all across the board. And if that means an MOU delegating that authority to you during this timeframe, and we can put an end date on that. Where. At the end of each election cycle, we renew that. That's not that big of a deal. That's pretty easy. That way we can work it, work through and make sure that we have that covered for everybody that's coming in, so.
And I can't imagine that that. In the future, any future coroner, if we already have procedures in place that are easy to follow, they wouldn't just follow right on and and carry the carry the torch, so.
I I I can't foresee that either, but at the same time, I watched the legislators this last this last time around. And what they did and didn't do on a lot of stuff that appeared to be a slam dunk that wasn't. So that's the only reason why I say that. If we do that where we know that that's something that we do have a definitive timeframe. And it's easy enough to renew. All we have to do is just bring it back up, change the date on it. And sign it again in the future, so. That that would be my recommendation on that, just just so we can stay, make sure that we stay ahead of the game. And we don't have something in place. Where one of our statutes has changed, that that's no longer applicable. So that's the only reason why I say that.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to make a comment. That I would like to see us purchase a headstone similar to the one I've shown you all that another. A county did that commemorated what was there. I don't know if you recall that. I sent everybody a picture of it. And I've showed it. I think I've showed it to you, Jim. I could get it real quick.
No, I I think we I think we remember it. I mean, I I remember it. The the question is, can't we put something on the columbarium? And then.
Whatever. Yeah, yeah, whatever.
Some sort of.
Something that. Something that is, yeah, something that's respectful, yes.
Yeah, I I think that. I think that's only.
And the way I've heard you say, Mr. Chairman, you want this. From legal back to us by the next meeting, cuz I'd like to see it done as quickly as possible.
Well, I I think we have to. Move ahead as expeditiously as we can, but not start doing stuff that isn't well thought out. And and I think that, you know, legal has to, you know, give it thought. We have to look at the fiscal considerations for it. But it seems like we can address some of it. Right away. And some of it with the city may take a little bit of time, and even the MOU with your office, Jim, might. Might take more than two weeks, but but I think the idea is that you're hearing, I think, loud and clear from this commission that. We we wanna have a solution for this. Commissioner Freel, did you have anything else?
Ah, yes, Mr. Chairman. So. On on the city front, they have said that they will give us a plot of land over there. I'm. Working on whether it's gonna be big enough for two or not right now, so. And we've already had a discussion that we need to make sure we got paperwork in place for that agreement itself. I guess my question would be, and it might even be to the clerk, I'm assuming we're wanting to move forward with the. Columbarium, so is this something that that? I think it needs to be put in place sooner than later, but is this something that? Jim needs to put into his budget, or is it something that we might have once at reserve or some one set money, or where exactly can? These funds come from the purchases and how soon?
If I may, if the cremains fall under. The county commissioner program. Then that would be, or sorry, not the county commissioner, the county program that's in the statutes that you all administer, then. I guess it would technically be your 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 all's responsibility. I don't know how we could ever parse out. You know, half of it, a quarter of it goes to this type of remains, a quarter goes to this type, a quarter goes to indigent. I'm not sure how that would work.
About just building the columbarium, that expense, right? So. That isn't something that the state's gonna reimburse for. They're just gonna reimburse for those burial costs. And all of that. You know, so it probably is like a capital expenditure deal that, yeah.
So. If I may, Jim, when you say that get reimbursed for the burial, I think you talked about before that going out and opening a plot, closing the plot. Costs like fifteen hundred dollars to do that, which was a wash, correct?
Right, and what we have going right now is basically with the funeral homes. They discount everything down to fifteen hundred dollars, and that's what we pay, and then. We turn around and give all that paperwork. To the County Commissioner Association at the end of each fiscal year, they turn it into the state, and the state turns around and reimburses the county. What could happen, and it would end up causing. Expense to the county, I'm sure. Is the funeral homes, if they wanted to, could say it's gonna cost three thousand dollars. To bury him and go through the whole process. And we get fifteen hundred dollar reimbursement out of that and end up losing fifteen hundred dollars in the deal. But. Flying under the radar, we basically got this agreement with our funeral homes that says you cremate them, you do everything, and you only charge us. Fifteen hundred dollars out of the two or three thousand dollars that they would charge anyway, the family, so. It all ends up a wash right now, the way that works, so.
So I guess my question is, is it taking out the opening up a plot, putting them in and closing the plot?
What I was talking about would be like, for me personally, if we didn't have the columbarium or something like that. We could actually go out there without having a piece of land for the city or whatever, and just basically buy a plot. Which. Right now, according to their price list, runs six hundred and fifty dollars. They have an opening and closing fee of eight hundred and fifty dollars. That's a total of fifteen hundred. I would end up. Without cremation, just. Is an agreement to, hey, I'm gonna help out, go get the body from the funeral home, take him out and direct bury him in that plot.
And that's why we haven't done that with what we have now is.
But you could do the same with cremains. You could go out and just buy a plot. Whatever they decide to give you on that that lowest tier. And put so many cremains in that plot. As a direct burial. Leaving the funeral home and all their costs out of it. Other than now that that cremation, what we'd pay for it. Best deal is is that we put up a thing columbarium or have a plot of land somewhere or something that. We pay them for what they do, cuz again, this isn't coming through my office. This is just roundabouting itself to my office. And have a place to go put people. Simple as that.
Right, so the fifteen hundred goes to the cremation. You you go and pick them up, take them out, put them in the columbarium, and they have a place to go, and if we're not putting them in a plot. Because if somebody comes back and wants Uncle Joe back, and then we gotta reopen it again and find Uncle Joe amongst.
But if we own that, I can reopen it at no cost.
Right, exactly. And you know which needs to go to the.
Yep.
To recover the the remains, so. So I guess it comes back to my original question. If it comes back to the county commission, then. Being that we're overseeing the program, then where can we take funds from and? How do we go about doing that to get the to get this thing purchased?
You're talking about the sixteen thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Well, fifteen plus a couple.
Fifteen cuz, yeah, plus whatever the foundation costs.
Plus engraving costs, if there are.
Well, I'm sure we can get that figured out fairly quickly.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, are you speaking, what what timeline are you looking at? To purchase this?
Well, I mean, they, I know we wanna get it done, so I guess, you know, I'd like to see it sooner than later, but they've been sitting there for.
If if we need to wait till the next budget cycle and work it into there, that's perfectly fine, as long as I got permission to go through what we've got. Get rid of what we've got, as many as I can. I mean. We're gonna be sitting on them whether they're in the columbarium or in the office, and we have been to this point, so I. I honestly believe this isn't something that needs to happen like this month, if it's gonna be a problem, we we can wait until the next budget cycle. You know, and then the other piece of that I wanted to bring up before I forget. Is that line item for indigency. Is currently going in the hole, so we either need to move money over into that or just let it go. If you're okay with it going in the hole, knowing that we're gonna get reimbursed. You know, but just to let you know, it's it's at zero.
I'd like to know. About getting the money. I'd like you to finish that. I'd like to do to get this done. It's been sitting around for years and hasn't been being done properly. And I just wanna read this real quickly, Mr. Chairman. This memorial is dedicated to those whose earthly remains were entrusted to the care of the people of Natrona County. May their souls rest in peace, and that's how I wanna refer to it for myself, because I don't wanna get rid of anything. I wanna return. The remains to the family members if they, and even if they can't pay for it, and I wanna start being. I just would like to see this go the way it should go. If we have sixteen thousand dollars somewhere. I'd like to. Have Commissioner Freel order this. This deal, because everything takes months anymore anyway to get it manufactured and brought into us, and. So I I could say where I think we could get to sixteen thousand, but I'd rather clerk do it.
Mr. Freel, do you have any? Idea, or did you talk with premier? About a delivery time or, you know, what to expect?
Well, they were a little ways out. However, they happen to have a forty-eight niche columbarium that is about to be done. First come, first served, so.
Would you would you please find out, you you might get pictures of it, but you also. Might find out if we don't get this one, then how long might the next one take?
Good.
My my feeling is that we can come up with this money and we we should. And there are a couple of options as I see it. But today, I think I'm not prepared to say, yeah, go order it. I think what we need to do is get a firm. Price, get, I don't know, I think this one is the one in writing.
Or the, yes, this is the one in writing.
So we have that, but we do have a couple of questions, and I I think that we ought to get our foundation costs lined out, and if we wanna. Have an engraving, figure that out too, so we have a total estimated cost. We still don't have our MOU with the city. So I'm thinking over the next, you know, thirty days, we're gonna probably be in a good position to pull the trigger. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And I think then going forward for the fiscal twenty-five budget, we can. Move that account line under the commissioner's account, so it's more appropriate. I can do that move, you know, we can do that during budget session if you still approve.
Yeah, please make a note to do that, cuz I might forget, actually, now that I've.
And I'll just take it out of my budget request and away we go.
I have a note about it, so we won't forget.
Okay, great. Well, um. We're supposed to have about five minutes. For everything else. So I think we need more time with you, maybe even at our next meeting, but. I think we can do a little more than five minutes, but I don't know that we can do a lot more than five minutes, so with that, keep going.
Thank you. And then the next, I believe, category that has not been addressed as. And you know, it's been piecemealed is the actual. Policy. Regarding all the things we've talked about. Now, you would ask us to look into other states and counts, counties, sorry. Well, and we also did check other states. That wasn't super helpful, because I don't, I can't get their actual policies. You know, we can read the statutes that govern these type of. Situations, but we can't actually get our hands on the policies, except for Fremont County was really good. And when I called. Three or four other counties, they they referred me to Fremont County. So it's my understanding, it's.
And that's because the coroner there has been kind of. Say overseeing it, but. The problem I see with like their policy is. That this isn't. Where the funeral home. Comes after all said and done and makes application. They make the families themselves personally come to the commission. And make application for these funds. I don't know that you want. To have time set aside for every meeting for a family to come in and try and make application for this stuff. And then only be. A partial of what they've got to deal with with, say, the funeral home. So in that situation, what you've got now, again, it's like the funeral home, they say this is gonna cost. Three thousand dollars, but. You're saying that that you can't come up with that three thousand, so what I suggest you do is go to the Fremont County Commissioners and make application to them. It's it's a complicated process that adds a lot of steps that, in the end. Doesn't provide any better resolution. So.
Let's not do that, then.
Well, that's one checked off the list.
But, you know, my feeling is that. I don't. Look forward to having grieving family members coming in and. You know, trying to. You know, I I guess act like a judge. And. Basically make a decision on the cremains that have. Zero monetary or sentimental value to me and the county. So my feeling is. If the funeral homes start charging more than fifteen hundred dollars and and it becomes significant capital outlay for the county. We might have to revisit the policy, but in the meantime, I'd like to see. The MOU at the coroner's office, and I'd like to see a policy that the commissioners have. That we feel good about, that then the public can also look at and rely on. That doesn't have that component of it that Fremont Counties has. That's just me speaking.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
Every other state that that I looked at and researched, and I've done it all over the United States. All different wording, but comes back basically the same thing. That in the end. It goes back to the county and the responsibility for burying someone goes to the county. You have some states, say Colorado, where they go immediately to a science institution. And get used in a cadaver lab or whatever, and then go back to the county, but I mean, in the end. Every statute that I've read says responsibility is goes back to the county.
And the ones I've looked at, I think we overlaid some. They do have a statute for, of course, indigent slash unclaimed. And we kind of do. When we address one of those. Kind of.
Yeah, and most states are are going to, almost all of them that I've I've looked at. Exactly what we've gone to is it goes back to the county and then the state out of whatever fund. Will. Help to reimburse the county for the cost that they incur, so.
All right, Michelle. I'm trying to recall what we have on the agenda for our next meeting.
So the next meeting, we have the special meeting at one thirty.
Right.
And then at. About approximately twenty-five minutes, and then we were gonna have a little bit of a gap in there. At two thirty, the library comes in. So we would have. A half hour gap, which I was planning on filling, and then from three, you can have availability.
All right.
How long we plan on.
You want, what do we want next time? Do you want thirty minutes or sixty?
I was thinking that perhaps next time we would present you, well, we can discuss as well, but present you all with the MOU for the coroner's office. And then perhaps a draft resolution, so then when we do get the property and it's all ready to go. Mr. Coroner can go out there and properly bury the cremains.
It's two forty-five.
Okay.
And Commissioner Freel may have an update too. Gentlemen, any anything, go ahead.
I am going to look into. Community members that may be interested in. Donating money, little money, so we can get that headstone, I think is very necessary, Mr. Chairman. So if you don't mind, I'll see what I can do about that. I don't even know what one costs these days.
Yeah, that's fine, if you wanna go gather some information and some ideas on on some things. Mr. Coroner, Lita, did you have anything else you really wanted to go over today?
I've got your. Nope, just that I've got your okay to go back and start digging into what we've got. I've already got an affidavit of release that I'm using, which basically clears us of all responsibility once I give those remains back to whoever interested part of your family. And then I move forward with that.
Yep, no concerns.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm still, I'm up next as well.
Stay here.
No, thank you.
As the old cowboy used to say, be hasty.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, we're getting, we're going to take a five minute break.
I probably spelled it wrong.
Oh, we saw that, but. Right, well, especially since, you know, Mike did the memo and everything, it's not as if. And if you would make one for me too, please, when you're available. Sorry, Michelle, thank you. Oh, we still have a little bit of time till three fifteen for county and. Oh, well, I didn't, I don't keep, I can barely keep track myself. Sorry. So I have a question, Tracy, just because I don't know. So I, when you're moving money around or we have to do that, is just know all, I'm just, I just don't know, like, there's all these accounts, and so you know which one can pay for what, and I just, okay, and so then you can move them, okay. I mean, how would you know, you know, you would not, no one would have predicted we needed fourteen thousand dollars for this. So where do you find that? You just look through, not just, but I mean, you look through and you make sure it 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 balances? I don't. Okay, well, no, I know it's more than that, but. So monies you could do stuff like this with, okay. Sorry.
I tried.
All right, um, I had Tracy on next. Are we sticking with that? Okay. Tracy Good, county clerk, June, July budget sessions.
Can turn it on for you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I would like, if possible, to schedule some more budget hearings in June when the Mr. Mr. Chairman returns from being his scheduled absence. So I'd like to see what the availability of the commissioners are during that timeframe. We have until the third Monday in July to approve the budget. I know it gets kind of crazy because we don't have a true revenue picture, you know, that at certain times when we're trying to distinguish the budget, but I would like some commitments or some time commitments from the commission to work on it a little further.
So on that note, is there anything we can do to get at least some better sense of the revenue picture? And I understand that final numbers are, you know, come in when they come in. But can we talk with the treasurer? Can someone have a discussion with the treasurer to try and get at least the most up to date we can? Maybe that's, I mean, I I'd take end of April. I'd I'd take into May, that'd be fantastic. But I, it just seems in the two, two of these that I've been through, there's, it it's completely just my gut turns, frankly. Because you're like, here are all the expenses, and we have to make decisions based on a revenue picture that we don't even have an idea of what it's looking like. So Tracy, is there anything we can do to at least get a little bit of information earlier than July?
Mr. Chairman, of course, I can't speak for the treasurer's office, but if maybe we could talk to Nick and even get instead of, because I think he reconciles monthly. So instead of maybe, you know, him reconciling May for us to have in June or whatnot, at least just get to a, to reconciled to a certain date, instead of it being truly at the end of the month. That would be my only suggestion. Again, I I can't speak for him and his processes, so that's something that can certainly discuss with him and and see if we can get a more up to date or a more accurate screenshot date certain or as a date when we're working on the budget. That's all I can offer.
Would you meet with me and him?
Certainly, I would love to.
Thanks.
So with that, our budget hearings are May twenty-first and twenty-second. I will have to reschedule the treasurer's office, May twenty-second budget hearing, as he will be out of town. But that's thirty minutes, so that's, you know, not too arduous on on us rescheduling that. So, Mr. Chairman, I believe you'll be out of town until June thirteenth? So. Yes. Correct. Those are, those are the, be the actual budget hearing dates. Tuesday, Wednesday. Okay. So historically, I guess, based on requests, needs, wants, where we're at revenue wise, I guess I just don't know how many hours or days we we want to look. I just want to give us enough time. I don't want to hurry through it. I say this every year.
So are you looking for a date before the end of May? Or are you looking for a date as soon as possible?
After you re- return.
Well, why not Monday, the seventeenth of June?
Okay. If that works.
Gentlemen. Michelle, will you, do you have your phone?
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me text Commissioner Millen.
Monday, the seventeenth of June. And then, you know, maybe a couple hours here and there throughout, and then some more dates, first part of July, after we do have maybe a better revenue picture, but.
Does anybody see problems with either Monday, June seventeenth or the morning of Tuesday, June eighteenth? Okay, so Monday, June seventeenth. Alice is looking into it. I don't know yet. But yeah, I would expect a half a day. Yeah, Monday. Tracy, I assume that works for you.
I'm sorry.
I assume that works for you, for you would have said something. Okay. Do we know if it'll work for the treasurer, since that would be one?
I will shoot it out there.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
It could.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, of course, there will be more to follow, but.
So so then, so then, do you think we need additional time in June?
Perhaps.
Like, so the seventeenth.
Or even more, or June, more time, or in July, first part of July.
Well, and and I know we're going to need some time in July.
Correct.
But if you thought it would be useful to have some more quality time with us in June, and we could try and find another half a day, even if it's just, I mean, it might, guys, I I'm not saying it's going to be another half a day, but it 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 may just be an hour or so, but just trying to clear the schedules. So Tracy, would you like to have a little more time in June?
Could we please, and then if if we make a lot of progress on the seventeenth, and we can, you know, I'll also also cancel if we need to. I I just, I don't want to not give us enough time, and I want to be respectful of your other schedules. Correct.
No budget hearings.
No budget hearing. You'll have your budget books on your desk. Okay.
What what do you think about, and I know Michelle's out of the office, Monday, June twenty-fourth? But what are the thoughts on the morning or the afternoon, Monday, June twenty-fourth?
That works for me.
Commissioners.
Then I think, because of what happened last year, you had some, you know, additional questions for department heads and whatnot. And so if if those arise during one of our work sessions, then we could get them in here and and have some questions answered further too, if maybe.
Did you, did you do the other one on the seventeenth for morning or afternoon? You you guys have a preference, morning or afternoon for these?
Morning.
Morning. Okay, so let's go ahead and do the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth of June in the morning.
Seventeenth and.
Correct.
About seven.
But they'll be done.
Eight thirty. For both.
Then I do have another budget related topic.
Well, do we need a July? Don't we usually need a July just to like, kind of like, last minute? And sometimes that's by phone.
Oh, that, there will be possibly a special meeting at the end of June, which you can attend by phone for budget amendments, if any, that need to take place, but that'll be a special meeting.
That's the one.
Yeah, and that'll be the end of June.
Yeah, just put that in, Michelle and Tracy, when you need it.
Correct.
We'll, you'll, you'll get three of us, because that's.
Yes.
Yes, there will be. Right, that's where we actually vote on it.
No, the the budget has to be approved by July fifteenth.
How about on parade day? It'll keep us off the streets. No, I I think that let me pull my calendar back. Not as well as you threw it out. You stole my candy, as I recall. Okay, you want to stick with, well, we've got a meeting on the sixteenth?
The fifteenth is the, it'll be the here, it'll be the meeting in July. It's always on that third Monday. It's not a Tuesday.
Oh, well, mine shows, so. So do you want to? Oh, wait.
That's what we're working on.
I was just thinking then the fifteenth, so the fifteenth, we'll meet in the afternoon anyhow. So why don't we meet for like an hour? I mean, how long do we need?
We need to, I'll have to have the documents ready, the resolution and whatnot, ready on, for the fifteenth meeting. So we will need to meet prior to that, please, like maybe the eighth.
Monday, the eighth?
If we're following suit with what we're doing.
Monday, the eighth in the morning?
The fifteenth is the approval of the budget that evening, our regular meeting. The fifteenth is your regular, is going to be your meeting, your regular meeting. Correct.
So we'll have a work session in the afternoon of the fifteenth and a a regular meeting in the evening of the fifteenth, Monday?
Yes.
Okay, and that's because of parade day?
That's because of budget.
Oh.
The budget has to be approved by the third Monday.
But we'll just do everything. All right. No, I was thinking about our our regular meeting irrespective of budget, but, okay, so you do want, do you want to do the eighth?
Please.
Let's do the eighth. And let's do eight thirty again. But I think that one, how long do you think we'll need for that one?
It should just be a cleanup. It shouldn't.
So let's, let's schedule ninety minutes for that, Michelle. And commissioners, do you want to start that one later than eight thirty, or do you want to keep it true to our other eight thirties? Yeah. Steve, Dave. Stick with eight thirty.
Was there one on the fifteenth started eight thirty also?
No.
One thirty.
Are we, we clear everybody?
And only ninety minutes for that one?
Correct. So far. And then there will probably be a special work session the end of June, but I don't have a date for that yet, and I'll just need three in attendance for that, if others can't make it. Those are our budget hearings. And I do have one other budget item very quickly. So I had talked to you previously about needing hiring staff for elections and needing some extra money for supplies, which I haven't gotten those figures for you yet, nailed down on what I'll need for supplies, however, due to the new changes that were effective in two thousand and twenty-three, especially the party change law, the crossover bill that was passed, I really want to inform the voters of Natrona County of these upcoming changes, or these changes that are now are in, into play for this election. Because you cannot change your party after May fifteenth, which is going to be a huge change for the voters of Natrona County. They're used to, you know, they're used to changing their party at the polls, so on and so forth. I do believe in voter education, voter responsibility, however, you know, I, I feel I need to be part of the voter education piece. So we were waiting for some guidance from the Secretary of State's office on a message, like a PR message that was gonna go out statewide, but they haven't gotten that yet. May fifteenth is gonna be here before you know it. I really would like to send a notification out to the voters. My thought was send a mailer, that's, has pros and cons, of course, because everyone gets inundated with election mail during elections, however, I would like to get it out sooner rather than later. I do have a quote for a mailer. I have two quotes, and it is not cheap, because we would be sending it to over twenty-five thousand voters. I have a quote for fifteen thousand dollars for a black and white card, and a quote for sixteen thousand for color, for a card with color on it, to send out to the voters. I do not have that in the postage line. According to my calculations, if the postage line is gonna run as it has been, my budget will be spot on, so therefore, there's no additional money to send these mailings out. You know, other than posting it on the website, media, I, I want another way to reach the voters. I did talk to Tom Jones at the fairgrounds. He said he would be more than happy for us to put something on the digital sign out there. I've just been trying to think of other ways, you know, we could utilize some of our resources that we have available to us to get this out. I know at one time, we had gotten with the city and, and put some stuff in, the utility bills and whatnot, but a lot of people pay their bills online, you know, kind of a new age these days, so that, that was one way that I thought to reach our voters. I'm open for suggestions, but I really, I would like to get the message out, because it's going to be, it's going to affect the judges, it's gonna affect the voters at the polls, that, you know, so the sooner the better, that they know what's coming and what is to be expected of them at the polls, then I think it'll help everyone in the, in the long run on Election Day.
Anybody wanna speak to that? I had one thing that I was told by some experts, that it's a waste of money to send those mailers out. That's not my opinion, that's what I've been told, that the thing to do would be to get it on the digital media, which we have plenty of. Probably run one or two newspaper ads, and it won't cost any fifteen thousand dollars. But I'm not telling you what to do.
No, I'm looking for sugge, I'm, I am open to suggestions, for sure. But I wanna be able to reach, I wanna be, you know, there's twenty-five thousand people, that is current registered. You know, we purged over twelve thousand people after this last general election, so. But the, the twelve thousand people that we purged, the party change is, is not gonna be an issue for them, because they're considered new registrants. It's the folks, the twenty-five thousand, that are currently registered now.
Commissioner Freel.
No, I think the only way, the only thing I'd say is social media, I mean, I think you get better bang for the buck out there, not that everybody's on it, and, yep. Older generation, they may not even get on it, so it may not affect them, but I think you can hit a mass amount of people that way, and it'd be a lot cheaper.
Okay, and I, I also, you know, obviously, the media, I've thought about reaching out to them as well, so.
So my, my feeling is that the most important right that we have is to vote, and if we've changed the rules, then if people aren't aware of it, even if that's on them to some degree, we're the ones that change the rules, and I feel that I would rather spend some money to do this than have a cluster, and basically, people wanting to burn down the election judges and the polling places, because they didn't pay attention, or they weren't aware, or whatever. And, and I have sent out, we've, we've, I've been involved with groups that have conducted polls that have sent out, been sent out to like every household in the county, and the response rate was actually pretty good. Now, it's, it's not eighty, ninety percent, but, you know, if it's fifty percent, but I think it was fifty-seven percent. Anyway, it was, it was worth it in that case, and I think worth it in this case. I think black and white ought to suffice, I know that only saves a thousand dollars. I do think that you need to, you know, get it on the website early, and change it up, so that people notice, maybe it changes, I think. I think media is good, and I think digital sign at the fairgrounds is good, and I think Commissioner Freel's right about, you know, trying to emphasize social media, but I sure strongly encourage you to, I'd encourage this commission to approve that, that mailer. Commissioner Freel.
Two things, so the, do you know what the cost was to put it in the, in the water bill? Was there a cost to that?
That was, I don't recall, that was one of the one cent efforts. We did a survey, we did a ser, a one cent survey on, it was one of the surveys we did, and we put in the utility bills.
City Casper puts, they'll put mailers inside of the water bill, and those go out. The only reason I ask that is if the cost isn't that, I, I would almost probably rather go that route, along with social media, just simply because you're hitting every household that has water and sewer and trash getting picked up. They may or may not read it, but at least they're getting it that way. If you do a mailer, if I heard you right, those mailers are gonna hit twenty-five thousand people, not.
Right, but it's, but it's only affecting the people that are currently registered now, the party change, so. You know, in my mind, putting it in a utility bill just to hit a household is not the audience that I'm trying to capture. I'm trying to capture the people that are already registered to vote, that are used to changing their party on Election Day, that are not gonna be allowed to do so.
Commissioner Freel, if I can, my, my concern is that you're not contacting people who may be renting that have water and sewer included, so they're, it's their landlord that's getting that notice, not, not necessarily their ten or twenty, you know, unit renters, and the other thing is, when we go beyond the city of Casper, where there isn't water, sewer, our, our county, our, I guess, our non-municipal boundary, or outside municipal boundary constituents, they're, they're not maybe seeing those either, so that's the only point I think.
And, and I agree with that, but I guess what I'm saying is if the cost is not, if it's not an extraordinary amount of cost, why would we not utilize that as another means to get the word out there? If we're trying to educate people and, and make sure they know the rule changes, why wouldn't we use something inexpensive like that, whether it affects them or not, they're informed then.
So in addition to not in place of?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, okay.
We could probably hire Terry Winker to go to door-to-door and handle those out. We paid for the, the notice.
Tracy, what else? We're running behind schedule, but.
I, I would, just asking for money. If I can get this designed and get it out, along with the other avenues that you have suggested.
Heather, how do we approve the it, or do we just say, go do it, and we?
And then it'd be, it'd be a budget amendment through a resolution.
Yeah, I, I think since you've already got the postage item, just run it.
Okay. I'll be back for more in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Next item is Commissioner's Discussion, CBOE Scheduling and Statute Changes. We're pleased to have our assessor and her assistant, Renee, welcome.
Thank you.
We have to enter these into evidence before I pass them out, or can I just?
We're getting.
Three years of agricultural values, we just wanted you guys to be able to look and compare. Do you think Jen will wanna copy?
Be double its placements? Oh my God, Peter, you're gonna have to interpret this. Are you guys gonna give us a brief tutorial on how to read this?
So, on the first page there, the darkened columns, it, over the abstract code is just for our use, the land description is under abstract description, so that's the type of land that we're valuing, irrigated crop, dry crop, and rangeland. The classes are what we use. I don't know how they break those down, that's above me. Then the land value is what I am currently using. The top page is twenty-two's. Land values that they use.
Is that per acre, twenty-four ninety? Two thousand four hundred and ninety per acre, down to ten dollars per acre.
Yep, yeah, and then the classifications that we get from the Department of Revenue are a minimum, a maximum, and a median price, which the median does not show in here, because it's usually populated in column F already, then we can go in there at each assessor's discretion and change those values to one of the other two values, which is either the minimum or the maximum. And I believe twenty-two was used, the lowest value, twenty-three, I, I used the lowest column, and then also for this year again, I used the minimum.
What's your average raise from last year? Kill us twenty-two or twenty-three percent?
I wanna say it was twenty-two percent, depending on, and it, and it's not all across the board. It just, it's, it's a, an average on each classification.
Madam Assessor?
Yes.
Help me, you, you're, you're giving these numbers by the Department of Revenue?
Yes.
Okay, how do they come up with the numbers?
That they do a five-year study in, down in Cheyenne on that, that is based off of what is grown on commodities, and then also animal units. Other than that, I don't know, the, the in-depth of it. I sent, we get a study sent to us every year, and I believe I gave that, I sent that to you all a few months ago, maybe?
So they, they have a study, and then that spells out the sample size, and that spells out?
As far as the in-depth aspects of it, I don't know. I, I guess, to educate myself more, that would be for assessors or people that set the land values to get more in-depth as far as what, what it actually entails.
So I, I, I feel like they're kind of cramming this down your throat, which means they're cramming it down my throat, which means, so what, so, and maybe I shouldn't say it vulgarly like that, but if these, these are the numbers, then what discretion do you have to deviate from them?
If I had an expert that could give me values based off of the criteria that would follow department rules and state statutes, I know way, way back in the day, we, our mapper, Becky Lovelace, she did our ag values, and she, she actually had degrees in all of that stuff.
I know, I remember Becky.
Yeah, so she, she actually set those ag values. Now, whether or not, because I was in a different position at the time, whether or not she used any of this information versus the information she found, that I'm unclear of.
Well, I wonder about hiring an expert then. We'll go have these with you.
Renee can.
Okay, and, and then I, Commissioners, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm taking this time, but go, you're gonna address that, Renee?
Yeah, so the agricultural manual that's used for this study, it's a five-year income approach to the value, based on production rates. So what Becky did a few years ago was exactly what the state is doing, so it's a combination of an income value to the land based on product, possible production rates. Not what is actually being produced, but the highest possible production rate for that soil classification.
So. Oh, you're making me mad now.
So, yeah, that's, that's.
No, be, because, because what's theoretically possible may have no connection with reality, which is grandma might have no interest for all kinds of reasons in growing corn or hay or whatever on the, the cropland that's outside her picture window, because grandpa passed away, and all the kids are down in Laramie or wherever. So anyway, we'll talk more about that, but I'm, I'm taking too much time, so Commissioner North?
Well, there's other things that are, that should be factored in too, and what about if you have tax returns that show that you didn't produce that much? Because everybody that raises alfalfa knows that you have a timeframe on the end of that, where you start losing production, you continually go down, even though you may have a maximum production at the first part of it, the further along you go, the lower your production goes. Or if you have a wet or a dry year, your production changes dramatically. So I agree with what Commissioner Nicholas said. You can't go on what it's, what the overall potential is. That's like putting money in the bank and saying that you're gonna get taxed, because somebody out there is making fifteen percent, and you're, you're only making two percent on your money.
And I, I understand, I hear exactly what you're saying. This is the route the Department of Revenue decided to take to create an equitable exemption, so it, it's created for equity, so that everyone is being treated exactly the same. Now, as far as how that moves forward, that would be a discussion we'd have to have with the Department of Revenue.
Well, and that's something that, that's what I'm asking, is that if you're, if you've got, if you show on your tax returns that you didn't make that much per acre, that you're not bringing in that kind of income, how can you be taxed on that? Because you were supposed to be taxed on the production of that land. Not what the capability is of that land, but what the, what you're actually producing on that land.
So these would be concerns that would have to be a. So these would be concerns that would have to be brought up with the Department of Revenue.
And I did bring, I did bring those up.
And for us here, maybe it would be strictly an income approach for every ag property out there. They have to prove that they're, they're producing, raising and selling, whatever it might be. And then some people don't want to share that. So I don't know how to, you know, to be any fair than using what they've done. And I'm not an expert at it at all.
Yeah, because it's, an example of that, a prime example is that if you're re, if you're replanning your fields, your first year of production is not gonna, I mean, it can be zero.
Well, and I'm not opposed at having an expert that can come up with these values and, and using that.
Yeah, because I mean, there's so many variables out there when you're talking about ag. I mean, if you have a bad grasshopper year, it can wipe out your entire crop.
Right.
And in a matter of weeks. If you have a bad year, if you have a water break in the water line, that's not necessarily your fault, but that can, that's going to affect everything. If the irrigation company can't produce water, like has happened several times in several places around our state, how do you, how do you justify that? So that's, I don't have any problem. If somebody's willing to share that information with you, I would recommend that we be able to utilize that and go off that instead of both these numbers because these are severely inflated over what production may be. I mean, for some crops, yeah, you may get that all per acre, but for other crops, you're not gonna get even close to that. There's no way in the world if you're raising hay, you're gonna get that kind of production.
Right, and, and maybe, you know, to have at least three or more or all of them, whoever the, the expert may be, we would have to get further guidance on it, I guess, of how to proceed with that. I know it can be done because we did it here years and years ago.
And, and I would just like to see that, that be available. Because like I said, you know, for most of this country, if you get four acres or four tons per acre of alfalfa, you've done really, really well. Well, I'm sorry, but you can't sell alfalfa for $800 a ton. That's not what the market will bear, and that doesn't include any cost or anything else associated with it. So to me, these numbers are extremely skewed. And, you know, and I'm not sure which ones which as far as looking at these, you know, what your different subclasses are. So I'm going worst case scenario, but, but it just, there, there needs to be a simple, a more fair way of doing that for ag than what having a blanket number.
I have a question. How much was the raise last year?
About the same, about 20%.
And what was it there before that?
That I don't know. I didn't calculate that.
Was it as much as 20% do you think?
Probably, at least. I don't know. I would have to go back.
I think it was almost 20% because it, one of during the last administration is when it started to come up in value, which it hadn't been quite.
And, and who, where do you get the information that has gone up in value? Who's telling you that?
The tables from the Department of Revenue.
So it's based on their computer programs and what they put in their computer programs?
Whatever their study has.
But do you, can you get copies of that from them? We could see what they put in their.
That's what I sent. This is what they give me unless they have more information down there than what they send out.
What do they call that document?
This is the agricultural land valuation study. And I did, I send it. I know that I've, I've sent it.
Please, please do.
A couple of times.
All right. Is there anything else that we wanted to talk about with respect to ag valuations? Dallas, when you're done with that, would you pass that down this way?
Yes, maybe we could get Michelle to make us a copy of this.
Okay, we should have it in our inbox, but.
I'd like to have it. It's easier for me if I have a paper copy.
Okay, nothing else then on ag stuff for now? I think you're hearing some concerns because I, I know that some of us have had concerns raised by our constituents. And some of it doesn't make sense based on some of the anecdotal stuff that we hear about sales and prices for hay and things like that.
Sure.
So maybe we.
I'll also look in the rules that, I can't remember if the rules break down the description of the classes of land. Or maybe that's something that we can get from the Department of Revenue also.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea too, because as you look at the, you know, there's, there's a big difference between, for example, some rangeland that's LRA 2, R1, $521 an acre versus an R5, $45 an acre. So, you know, that's a heck of a difference and it can make a lot of difference for the producers, the ag folks out there.
No, I was just gonna say February 23rd, 2023, that document was sent to you, so it should be in your inbox.
Great. So Tammy, I don't think you need to send that to us, but I think maybe, because Michelle's gonna make copies. But we ought to give some thought to whether it makes sense to find an expert. And in my experience, you know, the first thing, and Commissioner Laird's got, well, I think a lot of Commissioners have experience with experts. But, you know, maybe it's to show them this study if they're qualified and have the credentials to opine on something and just to give you some feedback. And if they say, and these tables, and if they say, you know, those look generally consistent with what, what we've been seeing out there. Or if they say there's some red flags, then I think we really ought to look into hiring an expert.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. So I was hoping, I know we need to talk about scheduling and we can sure do that next. And then with respect to any statutory changes that are gonna impact your office, we ought to chit chat about that too, just so we're a little more prepared. Go ahead.
Which do you want to talk about first? Okay, let's do, this morning, we, this is on statutory changes. We did have a meeting with the Department of Revenue. The new notice of value is ready to go. The 4% cap is in place and ready to go as well as, is it a Senate File 54? Is also ready to go. What we are waiting on this week is the governor, he has till the Friday to sign or veto anything. Is it Saturday? Okay, so we're waiting on that. Director Henson has spoken with the governor and he knows that this is top priority to get it done and out there. We're just waiting. Things that we are able to do, we have set our values. Last part of what we're doing is finishing up business personal property and present worth to be completely done. I'm hoping by the end of next week, we will be able to send that new notice of value to our master's touch so that we can see what they need to do to change the formatting. All of those exemptions will be listed at the bottom of the new NOB of what they are.
Mr. Chairman, Tammy, so this will be an additional mailing, correct?
No, these are our NOBs. Yeah, yeah, nope, this is our, this is getting prepared for the new values to go out. So we don't have any new mailings at this time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
The other thing that's in play is the refund program that's still in the works. It, it's a go. The new applications hopefully will be out by April 12th in the offices and online by the 15th of April. And they have till June 3rd to sign up.
How do you get the notice to the people?
They, we don't send anything out for that. When they, when our notices go out, usually people start calling and we will inform them. I've already had phone calls on what's available.
Well, we better, we need to do a little bit better.
Yeah, we need to advise them.
Yeah, well, we'll get, we'll get some information out on our website as far as that goes. As far as the 4%, 25%, we haven't done anything up until today because we have not heard until today.
Tracy's sending out a $16,000 mailer, maybe on one side, you should tell them what their rights are with your office.
The treasurer administers, maybe we should talk to Heather about, because they're the ones that take the application.
They, they take the application there or the taxpayer mails it in.
But I'm gonna guess a very small percentage of the people will know this.
Probably needs to be more on social media, maybe.
They need to be adequately informed however you want to do that, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, so there's, there's quite a bit for reductions on taxes. The, the reduction will be just on your primary residence only for this, for 45 and for Senate File 54. The cap will be put in place first and then the 25% will go in second. Other than that, we're just kind of waiting to get the approval so that we can run the calculation and.
Push it out.
Push it out. On that one, that's all I got. Any questions?
On statutory stuff?
On statutory.
Any questions on statutory changes and what status is and the plan is? Can we go back for just a second? You're gonna talk about scheduling next?
Yep.
Okay, I want to go back to this ag study.
Okay.
So they've got one livestock market, Torrington. I believe that's from Torrington. They kind of cut it off or it's been cut off. They've got two sale dates. There's so much variability between sale dates on livestock that taking two is, I think, just if that's all they did, they take two as their sample, as their basis for this study without taking into account other livestock auctions.
That I honestly do not know. I apologize that I don't know those answers.
No, no, you don't need to know the answers, but I'm telling you that the indication to me is that that's woefully inadequate.
Right.
And it's because of the variability at a given livestock auction. You can have one month it's this and the next month it's that, but so you've got to look at, I think, a longer period of time for trends. And why do they have?
Could we bring, could we bring somebody from the Board of Revenue up here to explain this to us?
Brenda said that she'd be happy to come up and talk.
That would be wonderful.
I think we should do that.
Well, here's the thing. She can, she can talk to us, but how fast can we make these changes? I don't know. I'd like to engage an expert. So that we're not just, so that we're not just hearing. Yeah, I was gonna point out.
These are not part of the ag staff study. This is our low income study.
Yeah, I was, that was my next thing, is why on earth would we have rental complexes?
You, you don't need that. You've seen my office recently, you would understand.
Number two thing. All right, so I do think it's worthwhile to try and find out if there's someone available sooner rather than later to consult with us.
And I would be happy to send out an email to have that done. Ask the question if they would, someone could come up and do that.
Okay, you mean from DOR? No, I don't want to hear from them yet.
Okay.
I want to hear from our expert.
Oh, okay.
But that's just me.
Are there suggestions on an expert?
Correct, correct. And I understand where Commissioner Laird's coming from. So let's, let's maybe do invite them to come up. And then we'll, we'll get to the bottom of some of this. So, okay, you can go ahead back to scheduling. Thank you, ma'am.
That's gonna be the hardest part, I think. So we don't think that we will be mailing out before the actual last, very, very last day. Statue says they have to be mailed by the fourth Monday in April, which is the 22nd. So we will for sure have them out by then, I hope. If not, the department also is aware that some counties might not make that date. And just as soon, shortly after, they can mail as well. And it's not too big of a, a deal, I guess, if they miss it by a week or two. But I, we're gonna strive for being out by statutory date of April 22nd. And that moves us to.
That's your notice of value?
That's our notice of value.
And then they have until, is it May 31st? Oh, just 30 days?
30 days.
And you'll give, you'll give them that based on the mail date, not based on 4/22?
Statue says mail date, yes.
Okay.
And so that brings us, the first 30 days is, I've just done it the same across the board to May 22nd. It's a little past 30 if you're counting weekends too, but otherwise, May 22nd. The second 30 days happens in June and that's just to make sure whoever does file a formal appeal, they have 30 days. We had a meeting, the proposed first date that we thought we could possibly start hearings is June 24th, but you guys have set that aside for budgets. We could also continue the four days after the, the 25th through the 28th of June. The next, I, I'm hoping we won't have any, but we'll, we'll see.
I think we should pass a resolution that we don't have any more BOC hearings because nobody will complain.
The second possible days would be, and it would be only a half week, is July 17th through the 19th. The what? Oh, maybe, maybe it was the week above, the 10th through the 12th.
Those were supposed to be the backfill days.
Yeah, and we could use those. We just have to make sure our state board certs are out. And then in August, it gets a little hairy between classes, people being gone, possibly the week of August 5th through the 9th. And possibly August 26th through the 28th.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, why this kind of gets problematic for both of our offices is because Michelle has her hands in both pieces of this pie, the BOE hearings, and then she's also one of my election deputies. So that's kind of where we're struggling with some of these timelines. kind of where we're struggling with some of these timelines.
And September we could possibly I don't have any, I maybe September third through the sixth. Would be my only week in September. Otherwise, we have trainings all the rest of the month. And I've got my major, my statisticians, Renee and myself in three of those weeks of classes.
Mr. Chairman. Could you, could you just give us a schedule that you could give us these days and get it to us so that we can look at it, decide between us what we might be able to do? Cause we've, we've got some pretty heavy schedules here for a lot of things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and like um, uh, Tracy uh, had said is Michelle Shell's a key player in, in both parts, so that, that's the hard part.
Make her happy, but get a, get a, something to her so that she can get those, I would like to see a printout of on selected dates, cause it gets confusing. Confused already.
Or with the um, asking the clerk. Is there a way, cause is it just the scheduling that Michelle would have to do?
No, we're constantly asking Michelle for, to go make copies of this, or, and she's
Yeah.
She's like, she works harder than we do because she's in there coordinating the next five.
Right.
Can you come in a little early? We're running a little late.
Yeah.
So we have got to have Michelle uh, for the, if not every one of these, then almost every one of these.
Right, and where I was going with ske- like scheduling the hearings, if we're, if we're going to continue with that is do we have someone else do that? Or? To he- help lessen the burden on Michelle and the clerk's office?
Well, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let both Michelle and our clerk speak to that, but understand that ultimately when they're pissed or when they need to be called again, I mean, it's helpful if Michelle's already talked to him two or three times, and so
Yeah.
I, I think that they ultimately have to get on a schedule that Michelle kind of is the master of anyhow. So it might be more of a pain in the neck um, for all of us if, if she's not, but those are just my observations. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with that statement, I, just trying to come up with an alternate solution if I could pull one of my other staff members to be on the scheduling end of it from the beginning. I don't know, I, I would have to.
Does it have to be the clerk that schedules? And is there, is that a rule? I mean, I would be more than willing to, to do one of my people as well, or both? To help.
The notice has to come from the clerk. We, there's been some discussion, Mr. Chairman, of stacking the hearings rather than scheduling appointment times, um, depending on the volume of appeals. So we might potentially look at doing that.
So I, I don't, I don't mind that for probably the majority, or you know, for a, a large number of them, but one, one thing that is frustrating to people who don't understand the system and the legal, the legal system is, why does it take so darn long? And, and that's because of interrogatories and requests for production of documents and other discovery. That's for things that get lost in the mail, that's for um, hey, I haven't found uh, a lawyer yet, but I do wanna get one, hey, that's for um, my case is complex because it involves the Eastridge Mall or condominiums or something like that. And so while I think we can be optimistic that we're not gonna have any hearings, I think we've I think we know better, and we can be optimistic that there are gonna be some easy straightforward ones that maybe can be scheduled um, sooner rather than later, maybe that's June, I'm thinking more July at the earliest, but you haven't given us any October dates, and I'm kind of wondering why you haven't. Well, you can't play, but, but, but they've already told you that it's no big deal if you blow off April twenty-second. You, you just, and Department of Revenue or the C, the State Board of Equalization told us in writing on an appeal that, well, we understand that the statute says, I think it was that particular October date. But we recognize and blah, 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 so they're telling us we can blow it off, so I, I'm not real sympathetic to that, but that's just me. I'm talking too much. Commissioners, jump in.
I totally understand that. Again, uh, the last four years have a great amount of appeals. I'm hoping that it's a lot less with some of the actions that you're taking to um, get information that is needed for each of these appeals. You know, I'm just trying to be done, I don't like to be clear to the end and into the holidays. Um, it's hard going into October, November. Uh, when they, they clearly should be done before September. I don't know. I'm just trying to be, I'm not so active, I'm just trying to get it done and off the books.
I'd like some October dates. Um, and then I think Commissioner Laird's right, we need to you know, kind of clear our schedules and see what works and what doesn't. Um, I've, I've written down the dates. Um, Commissioners, I don't know if you have any dates that you know are completely out um, of these that Tammy's already mentioned. I'm, I may be taking kids to college around the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth of August, so that's one those are a couple of days I've gotta look at carefully.
Well, October, um, other than the very first week in October, everything else is open. And the rest of the year is open except for the week of Thanksgiving, and I will be gone.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to engage the services of uh, former Judge Brooks for this? Cause if we are, we need to notify him the dates too.
I didn't hear the first part of your question.
If we're gonna retain Ju- the former Judge Brooks to be the hearing examiner, we would probably wanna make sure he has notice of the dates too.
So, um, uh, Michelle and I were talking about that, we know that we do need to coordinate with Judge Brooks, we're also trying to find an additional judge that can handle these if there's a scheduling conflict. So, um, and we, we thought about one, and he's a federal public defender full-time now, so that doesn't work. We thought about another one.
Well, uh, Chairman Commissioner, when we had a meeting, we were going to check with Judge Parks. To see if, and I don't know if, if Legal had had a chance to get with him. Um, to see about him, his availability, Judge Parks, Judge Parks, as a hearing officer as well.
And then Bill Knight was another name because.
I have a phone call into him, but Ren- uh, Renee did bring up a very good point. The gal that's, that, I don't know if it's his partner, but the lady that's in the office represents the uh, assessor's office. So I have a call into him to hear.
Well, that's not gonna work, um, if, unless, unless you just simply don't turn something over to your counsel. You see what I'm saying? And, and maybe some cases you wouldn't do that.
I guess I'm not understanding.
What level of involvement are you gonna have your attorney, is your attorney gonna be involved in every case, every appeal?
I hope not. Hope not.
Okay, do you, do you have any concerns with, assuming you don't have your attorney representing you? Do you have any concerns with Mr. Knight acting as the hearing examiner in other cases?
I don't, um, I just wasn't sure if it was not appropriate to do that, that's all. I, I don't have any issues with that.
Well, I, I think Commissioner Laird, I don't know if you have a perspective at least on the appearance of that.
If we can get a former district judge, I'd prefer that. Because they, they had, they rule on things and they understand the decorum and what their job is. I haven't liked having people who've been the county attorney previously coming in on these hearings. Not for any particular reason other than just, doesn't make me feel rosy and cheery. Um, so I know there's a judge from Rollins, it's a pretty good mediator. But I think, I do know this, I, I don't, there, I think he charges three hundred dollars a hour. So we have to take a look at the cost of that, I forget what judge.
Sorry, um, Ms. uh, Commissioner Laird, is there a statutory reason why uh, are legal here in the county, because we've got a few of them that they can't represent? Both like, one attorney does the commissioner's side, one attorney does the assessor's side, or is there a statute that says that they can't, I guess?
From the same office?
Yeah.
So I don't think we wanna do that, even if it's a waivable conflict?
Kinda like the Bill Knight and Karen Brand.
It's a statutory thing that, that basically does say that the county attorney can't represent you and the commissioners.
Okay.
That's in statute.
That's what I wanted to know.
And so I think that should go off on every other kind of thing, I don't think it would be wise. And I am for one, not for waiving any conflict, period, when it comes to the county. That's my personal belief.
I mean, my, my goal for this year is that we don't have as many of these appeals, but until we send them out and start getting phone calls, I have no idea.
Would like to hire, if you have to hire lawyers, I'd like you to do it here in town so there wouldn't be travel costs.
Okay, um, we'll uh, hope to hear back from Judge Park. Um, anything else we can do on scheduling? Right now, I know we didn't give you firm dates, but um.
No, it's just, it's, it's gonna be a
Up in the air right now.
If nobody cares about statute, I guess they can happen in October. I, I don't. I, I don't know.
Let's let the state B O E balance us on that if they want to. I don't think they'll want to. But we, we'll try and do as many as we can before that, but I think we'll just have to see what uh, what the volume is on these. Okay, we're behind schedule, anything else? On assessors' office, C B O E scheduling? Great, thank you so much, appreciate you, yeah.
There is one important item, Mr. Chairman. Who changes the time on that clock because it's not, it hasn't hit the uh, new time yet?
Um, I changed some of the other ones, but I'm too short for that one, so we'll get five commissioners on shoulders and see how goofy that looks. All right, let's uh.
Steve has to be the baseman.
Oh, thank you.
Jim, he's not here. So we're gonna talk about.
I'm just left them in the dust.
Shower Ranch M O U?
Yes, and we will need to make an amendment during the regular session because I failed to ask Michelle to put it on the amend, or on the regular session, even though I asked her to put it on the work session. Sometimes I do forget that.
Mr. Chairman, she, she did amend the agenda already, so it is on there, I can pass out the new agenda to you.
Thank you, Michelle. In any event, as we can see from Mr. Hagler's nice memo that he wrote you all, this is an agreement between Natrona County and Shower Ranch for the development of a gravel pit. And it is the funding for which was authorized, I believe, was that fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four? For the engineer. Right, is it just for the engineer?
Engineer.
Yep, engineering, excuse me. So I worked closely with Mr. Shower and Mr. Hagler. And I think that this is a good M O U. And everyone's happy, well, I don't know if you all are happy, but the other parties are happy with this.
Mr. Hagler, can you give us any highlights or high points of things that are a little different than on our, our typical um, our typical deal? I see that this memo is dated February twenty-seventh. Must not have had any big issues when I looked at it, but um, can you just refresh our recollection?
Uh, basically in a nutshell, this will move us forward with going ahead with the engineering, which includes uh, mining. And in order to mine, we will build a reservoir at the same time. Uh, or two, depending on how long we stay in this pit. Uh, and so this would provide gravel for the Buffalo Creek, Willow Creek area, uh, and then some, we anticipate. Uh, preliminary testing and everything we've done out there indicates that there's material. Uh, the, the big thing is the designing of a reservoir that uh, is gonna utilize well, the water that's in the creek there. Uh, at some point, uh, like when we leave. Uh, the, the reservoir will be filled and the, the ranch will get the benefit of that. Uh, so, once we have all the engineering done, uh, we, we would move ahead with going out to bid, and that won't be until next year. We'd have to budget it. But this is just gonna take care of the engineering, uh, the preliminary stuff as well as the permanent engineering. Uh, and give us more of a clear scope of the project itself. I, I don't see us not moving ahead. Uh, we've done enough drilling out there and digging that uh, we, we know the materials, there's a matter of uh, coming up with the engineering on the reservoir.
So I think what you're saying is we have to enter into this agreement with the Shower Ranch before we can go do our engineering?
Correct.
We get it locked in and both sides are comfortable?
Correct.
Okay.
And this has provisions in it that if we don't perform, uh, there, there is some payout, you know, if we, we drag our feet in production or whatever, then uh, the contract has a, you know, some clauses in there that we we're caught in that situation, we would be paying for the basically the use of the land until we get it all cleared up, but I don't foresee that being a problem.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, take a look at paragraph sixteen. I don't like that. That may cause us to waive our immunity of up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have to indemnify Shower Ranch and they hurt somebody and they get sued for ten million, we gotta pay that. Whereas we don't have to pay anything over two hundred and fifty thousand due to state law under the uh, Wyoming tort claims act, so I, that indemnity is I just don't, I don't, I wouldn't wanna give them that. I, I just think it would not be the greatest of ideas. They do something wrong, that's their business, and if we do something wrong, it's our business.
Commissioner Laird, just in general, just so you, you know that these provisions we do ask to be taken out as our general, how we deal with contracts and M O Us. Now, if an entity or I guess a corporation contract, if a per, if an individual you know, they're not willing to budge, then what we like to put in is as allowed by law. Not to cover us.
Well, I don't know what you're telling me. What I'm saying to you, what this says is if something happens on that ranch, somebody dies and they sue for ten million dollars and they sue the ranch for their personal negligence, we would have to pay the ten million dollars. If we, if we don't have that, we, and we caused the death, we pay up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because that's what has been in state law for fifty years or whatever. And, uh, all that does is increase our, uh, potential liability beyond our insurance.
Counsel, Commissioner Laird, my, my understanding is that the words as allowed by law, um, retain our statutory protections. Doesn't explicitly say that, but that, that would be my, my reading.
Yes, Mister Chairman, that, that's our understanding. And I think even Lita in negotiating with Mister Shower, um, had removed that. And he, he was pretty insistent that there be some type of indemnification provision in there. And within it, we're indemnifying him from, from our own, our use and operation. So it would be our own negligence, which we're responsible for anyway. And we specifically retain our governmental immunity in paragraph eighteen. So I, I think with all of that together, you know, legal feels that we're appropriately covering and maintaining our, our governmental immunity within this agreement.
And I think we ought to say that specifically. I don't think it should be left to doubt because this is in doubt. These are the kind of things that lawyers I know come and they'll sue Shower Ranch and try to pin it on them. And then we have to indemnify them and they, and there wouldn't be an instruction in their trial that their damages is limited to two hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, if it's ten million, uh, I don't want to have to pay it. I don't even want the question of paying it.
Commissioner Laird, can you be a little clearer on the exact language you'd like to see it changed to or to include?
I'd, I'd say I would have her, have her research this a little bit, but I would say something to the effect of this as allowed by law, it's too, too nebulous. Pursuant to the limitations of the Wyoming Tort Claims Act, our liability is limited to two hundred and fifty thousand. I think it's two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred because the city got into this with the big fire out there. And they had all kinds of lawsuits. And the court finally ruled that, uh, that the city had to pay five hundred thousand maximum. Now, that was because they didn't indemnify anybody and their own employees caused the problem. Here, it's where you're indemnifying somebody that's not a governmental agency. And so the limitations do not apply to them in a lawsuit. So I would want to make sure that the indemnity does not exceed what we would normally be held liable for under the Wyoming Tort Claims Act for counties. Some words to that effect, very clear. Cause as allowed by law, that, I don't know what that means.
Well, that's a pretty standard, uh, provision that we add to contracts.
What I'm saying is not standard. What I'm saying is very clear that we just don't pay past our liability limits. Why not say that? That's, that's the precise point of these indemnity agreements, which there's lawyers who just make money on what these indemnities mean. And, and counties who have, who put these kind of words in there and have never been forced into a trial involving the word indemnity would know that you wouldn't want to go that general.
Counsel, um, what do you think? Can we get, can we, um, make any additional changes to this that, that, uh, would appease the parties?
I'm not quite sure what Mister Shower, how he would respond to that particular change. He was very nice and cooperative. And of course, each party looks out, you know, what's in their best interests.
Okay, so let's, let's just look at the bigger. And there's a typo in the third from the bottom sentence.
We saw that.
Okay. So if we put in something to the effect of what Commissioner Laird was saying, you know, that made it explicit that in no case the indemnification, uh, would exceed our statutory, the statutory limits, right? So you put that in there, we then sign it and present it to him. And if he says no, then you can let us know. But if he says, um, fine, I understand, maybe we've got a deal and it's already been signed by, by us. What, what do you think, Mike, since you've, you may know him too?
I, I think he'll probably be okay with that.
The other thing
There's a lot of back and forth on this.
Sure, and I know you've been working on this for, I think, the, the entire time I've been on the commission.
And then so.
Mister Chairman, if I have no problems, you can tell Mister Shower this. Indemnifying him for the negligence that we may, that we may cause, let's say one of our trucks runs over somebody. A ranch hand. Now, that involves a suit against us, may involve a suit against him. I can see him saying, I don't, he doesn't want to be liable because our people caused the death or caused the destruction. I, I, I get that. But all we can indemnify him to is up to the level of what would normally happen if he wasn't even involved. Which is our truck runs over a guy, kills a guy. They get two hundred and fifty grand at the most. And/or workers comp, depending on whether that applies. And that's what we would, that's what we would offer as the indemnity. I don't think we can legally, we can't, we just shouldn't transcend our immunity that we have statutorily. I'm not willing to, to agree to it. Deal where we waive our immunity clause.
Okay, the, the other point, so Lita, I don't know if you want to go make that change and we jam it in tonight or, or not?
He has the final copy, so.
No, we've been running.
Okay. Well, and, and then the other thing is, um, kind of big picture stuff is we'll make sure that in our contracts with our contractors that are out there doing the work for the county are well, um, insured or properly insured and, um, you know, uh, that they're the indemnification provisions of us as well. So I don't know, Mike, how much the county's gonna be out there doing stuff that, anyway, once this gets going.
We won't. It'll be a contract.
So it seems like the, the risk is that, that this would be on anybody but a contractor. You know, that it's not gonna come back to us most likely. I understand Alice's point, but um, my observation on these things is usually it's the, the crusher and the contractor that's in and out of there every day.
And I believe in here, it does state that our contractors should have the right amount of insurance. But it's been a little bit since I looked at it.
Yeah, I saw that in there.
Okay, and that was Mister Shower, of course.
But we need to make sure that's in our contracts with the contractors down the road.
Oh, okay.
Does it say how much insurance they, their level they have to maintain?
I don't believe that we added that.
I, I, I think it should say that. And, and it probably should also, at the end of this, it has a very clear statement that we are not waiving any right of immunity bestowed upon us under Wyoming law.
We do, we do have that. And we have that in paragraph eighteen a couple times. Says the county specifically retains all immunities and defenses available to them as sovereign or governmental entities pursuant to the statute and all other applicable laws. And that is in there. And it, above it, it says county expressly reserves governmental immunity.
Except then you have the bind where you have granted somebody indemnity and not locked it down.
Do you need anything else from us right now?
No, we can speak with Mister Shower.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Tell him thank you.
We are all right.
Okay. Almost there. We're almost there on this one. Hang on just a second. Did you see my note to you right there? Um, it was a question on whether I can sign that Gray Reef thing or if we need any more formal approval? This All right, and commissioners, I, I think we're on board with applying for this grant for the, uh, Gray Reef, um, road work and the two bridges over there? Okay, great. That's it.
Okay.
Thanks. I'll sign that today.
Good to see you, Mike. That's the biggest fish I've ever caught. I was, we ate part of it that night down there. See you later. Heather.
Okay, commissioners, um, so I guess the, the agenda will change a little bit. Um, we'll be removing item G off of it then, which that was that agreement with the Shower Ranch.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam County Attorney. I've, I've seen grown men cry when indemnity gets stuck in their ear. Cause they didn't interpret it properly.
It, it's good to be very careful.
It's like we're insuring them for whatever number they think that they're entitled to. And boy, do the firm up in Jackson love to see those kind of things bungled.
Well, I, I think it's good to be careful, so there's no problem there. I guess with respect to the other items that are on the consent agenda, there's two, um, resolutions that are accepting petition to vacate a portion of, uh, Fremont Street and Waschiki Street. This is a process, it's under Title twenty-four, it's establishing and, and vacating county roadways, which also encompass public roadways. The first step is, uh, accepting the petition, which you guys have, and then appointing a viewer. And Mister Hagler has agreed to be the viewer for both of these petitions. And then down the road, after he prepares a viewer's report and makes a recommendation to the commission on the petition, this will come back before you and we'll, we'll set it for a, a hearing date, um, at, at some point down the road. So are there any questions on those?
Mister Chairman, I'd like to say I see something here that I, I'm sure you accomplished. It makes me very happy. I didn't know it until I just now saw it. And that's Jennifer True.
Heather, um, the question I had on this, and I'm not even sure this is the same one, but I think that they had spoke to someone in your office and her name was Tammy Sell. Um, does that ring a bell? Um, and does that ring a bell?
It, it does. So I believe that has to do with, uh, Gas Hills Road.
Okay.
And this is, this is a different matter.
Okay, we're not dealing with Gas Hills Road matters today?
Um, nope, not yet. But, uh, that, that should be before you pretty quick here.
Okay, I was trying to connect the dots. Um, great. And I, I don't think there's a problem there, but, but I was just kind of talking through the, the issues. There might be a question that I have for you at that point. Thanks. Sorry, it was
And actually, Mister, Mister Chairman, that'll probably, um, I have a, a deed basically. Uh, the Gas Hills Road lies outside of the easement, so we've got deeds to get, get within, get the right of way corrected. She's trying to sell the property, so she would like that signed and approved pretty quick. So, um, I guess I'll touch base when I hear from her and then maybe we can discuss whatever question.
We'll talk offline about it. It's, I, I, I think that there was some concerns that don't need to be concerns. It's just more informational and, and I think she'll be fine.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, I need to ask a question about these board appointments and item four tonight. This is an appropriate place to do that?
If it's, if it's personnel, then I'm not sure. So if it's general questions?
It's just a general question. I don't know either one of these two people. Did we have a meeting I missed or something where the, you came up with these names?
Um, how we've, and I apologize, I should have sent out an email about this. How we've always handled the community, I'm sorry, the Casper Reentry Center Board is they vet their own people and then they send the recommendation to us. And then we generally just appointed them. So I didn't, I just followed our old process that we've always followed, so I do apologize. Um, because the board, they're all by virtue of office or by where you work. So, um, the Casper, um, Pitzler, Pritzler is the Casper College appointment. And then, um, I think the other appointment, um, I can't think of her name right now. Um, she is the community one.
So somebody else has asked us to appoint them?
Yeah, the board, the board, because what has happened in the past is when the commissioners have interviewed members, people and appointed members on the board, it hasn't worked out well. So you have to have kind of a certain stomach and a certain attitude to be on that board.
Yeah.
So the board has specifically asked that we vet our people and then we'll make the recommendation and then send it.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Did you, did you have more for us, Heather?
I guess, uh, the other items that are on there are just asking that you approve an RFP for the commissioner's parking lot. Um, I think we've got publication dates and, uh, walkthrough dates and bid opening dates all put together, thanks to Michelle. The inter-agency agreement between the Secretary of State's office and the Clerk's office. If you have questions, Tracy is the expert on that agreement can answer those. And then the resolution that appoints, uh, Ms. True to the Collective Health Trust Board as a county appointee. And then the agreement, uh, between Natrona County and ECS for the planning, uh, consulting, um, services is also on, on the agenda for this evening. So are there any questions about any of those items?
No. I had a question about the, uh, adoption of the twenty twenty-one ICC codes and for, uh, Dave or for anybody else. I mean, we have, um, I think received a whole folder, uh, from Patrick. Is this contentious? As I recall, a lot of these things have, uh, are required and we don't have discretion. And most contractors are using anyhow.
That, that, that is, that is what happens. We have to, we have to adopt them within a certain timeframe. Some of these were still behind.
So, go ahead.
For us to move forward, we have to adopt what they've moved forward. And all this stuff has gone through our, uh, our contractor board already. So they're already aware of all this. This is all going through. This is just kind of a final thing for us to approve at this time.
Will we get a staff report tonight from Patrick to kind of tee this off?
From Patrick or Jared?
Or Jared, I don't, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, but I mean, we can, but that's basically what it amounts to is that we, we're mandated by the state to adopt a lot of these. We have a certain timeframe to do it. And if we don't do it, then we lose home rule. So it's, uh, it's kind of an interesting way it's set up, but that's basically what it amounts to. So we, we don't have any choice. We really have to adopt.
Commissioner, for you.
Yeah, generally it defaults back to the state. Um, if you don't have these in place, these are like way behind in being in place. They should have been put in way before Patrick got here. In fact, after we put these in place, you're probably gonna see another set coming forward just to get us caught up to where we need to be today. So.
And, and all that's fine. I'm anticipating kind of a big crowd tonight. And so I, I don't want, you know, forty people to be up in arms about, you know, stuff that really isn't a big deal. So as long as, um, Patrick or Jared can, you know, lay that table properly. Um, and, and Dave, if, if you jump in after they do the presentation, you know, that, that's fine. But I just didn't want to have people confused, um, because of the adoption of a code. Now, maybe I'm just worried about something I don't need to be worried about.
Well, if you just don't have them caught up to where they need to be, it's gonna default back to the state anyways. And so the, it's not really doing anything except for bringing us into compliance with the state.
Steve, Steve's right, though. We are behind after we get, but we had, we have to adopt these before we can move to the next set of codes that we have to adopt. And some of these, just like the, uh, the electoral code, we're about a year behind on adopting, on, on adopting that right now. We have to, we, we don't have any choice about that. So, I mean, it is, there, there are state statutes that say that. So, I mean, it is, there are state statutes that say that.
Yeah, I'm not arguing, or I don't have a concern here, it's just I wanted to make sure that we don't just hit the gavel and just let the public start asking, you know, questions and things, so I think we're going to be, I think we're fine.
Yeah.
But somebody will need to, you know, be doing that messaging to the public.
Yeah.
All right, Heather, anything else?
Not as far as the agenda goes, I think that covers everything.
For executive session, I think we do have, well, I can't remember, do we have anything, either personnel or real estate that we need to go over tonight?
I don't have a real estate item, potentially a personnel matter, but I wasn't exactly sure if we were discussing personnel this evening or not, actually.
Okay. So we'll figure that out and let you know. All right, we are at 4:42. So. What's, what be next? Roundtable, I guess? Dallas, you want to, Commissioner Laird, would you like to go first?
I seem to be, always be selected to do that, so I'll go right ahead, it's okay with you. So. On this MRG, I did ask Carter about whether they had approved any money, and I asked him what he was going to do, and he says, "I do plan to push for it in the budget process, no council commitment yet however." And then I asked him, "Can I reveal this?", and he says, "You can represent my view, sure." So that's what I've just done. So I'm hopeful that, that the city can see where, and I know we have Steve and a couple other people with respect to this, but I'd sure like to see them, whatever the state pays, the other portion is split with us, that's what I'd like to see down the line. Because I know that this is a touchy subject, I see the pros and cons of it, but I think that we as commissioners have to, I think we should do a little more to get people to get in this project, get the state maybe to pay more money, I really didn't know that they could pay up to sixty percent under that statute. But if they can, I'd like to, I'd like to see us make a presentation, a very viable presentation to that, because the more we can, the users of this airline pay, the better I feel because of the amount that we're having to spend. I mean, there were parts of me that wanted to say, "Well, we need sixteen thousand for a deal for the cemetery, I'd like to say, take that off that MRG, and there we have the money, you know." So, and the money then stays in the county. So. There's just a part of me that's coming to an end on that MRG, if we can't get the assistance, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I think that if the city doesn't care, then that sends me a message. If the people don't care, it sends me a message. If the state doesn't care, it sends me a message, they want to put it all on one little county piece of government, you know, because we're looking at some big costs out at that airport, if we build the tower and a lot of other things, which it needs, and then if we're getting an airshow in here and all of that, we're going to need some dough. And so I know we just, everybody here is fairly conservative and careful about how we spend our money. This one bothers me just because there's this little looming threat hanging over my head, I just don't like that at all. And one was leveled a little bit about, "They've got to have this cleared up before April, or they just may leave", just that kind of a statement. Irritates me as an attorney, that's, that's the kind of statement, I remember I talked to Steve Frill one time, and somebody had said, you know, something about, "Well, if you don't do this, I'll do this", and then he says, "That's where I walk away from them", and I don't mean to misquote you, Mr. Frill, but I like that. If they tell me, "If you don't do it my way, then I'm quitting", well, don't let the door hit you in the rear end on the way out. That's the Wyoming way of dealing with it, if they're nice to us, they're fluent with us, they're flexible with us, I'm very appreciative of that, but when they put a, when they level a gun on me and say, "If you don't do it our way, then here's what we're going to do to you", I just don't think that's a good way of doing business myself, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to echo that a little bit more, and when Casey brought up several of the different airlines that are also contracted to SkyWest that don't have MRGs, then I think it's time for us to start pursuing some of those people, because I've been listening to the same argument now for too long, and I think of all the different things that we could utilize that money for in the county, including taking care of our employees, and covering health costs and other things that are associated with this, taking care of the fairgrounds, I mean, there's a whole list of things, but I wasn't really planning on talking about that right now. I was going to bring up that the Parks Department is working on some new rules or changing some of those, trying to clarify some things that have been, oh, you always find things that you miss, there's always something, it doesn't matter how many times you go through a document, there's always something that you would have preferred to have said in a different way, or things have changed and you need to change that, so. They're working on those, they're going to be coming before the commissioners. There is a proposed campground increase this year. We haven't had a rate increase in our camping, campgrounds since 2012. So those are, those are things that we're looking at doing, and that'll come before the commissioners, before very much longer, so. The other thing, too, is that I was going to talk about the shooting complex. With the shooting complex, with the shooting complex, we have gotten to the point now where the committee has got nine different communities or counties that have applied, that have submitted interest, and they're waiting to see what happens, we should have an RFP out within about, about two months, and at that point in time, well, hopefully we'll have it within a few weeks, and then we'll work on the, what the final resolution is, but that will only take us to the next stage, which will eliminate, basically, hopefully get us on the shortlist. That shortlist will take us on until next year, and at that point, the legislators will be the ones that decide on this. So it's not, we'll do what we can, we've got a good location, and we will keep working on that to make it, make it better, thanks.
Is there anything you think we, as a commission or as a county, should be doing to either educate our legislators or conversations we should be having? Anything we could be doing that'll be a benefit?
That's a good question. And I say that because, listening to the last committee meeting that they had, which was about two and a half hours last Friday, it was all over the place, and it appears that different people are trying to rule out different locations already in favor of their own. One of the advantages that we have over a lot of places is that we've got a large chunk of ground that's actually private property right now, it's not publicly owned, it's not owned by the Bureau of Rec or BLM or anything else, so we don't have to go through those hoops, so it's going to be easier for us to lock up that, that is one big advantage that we have. But I think it's always good that we talk to our legislators, I don't know, the committee is actually the one that's going to do the, cut it down to the shortlist, and they're from people from all over the state, so I don't know how much input we're going to be able to have with that. I mean, I really don't, it's just Art Washit is the co-chairman of the committee, and he and Senator Hicks are the, are the two chairs on that. And we've listened to what they have to say, and I, I feel like it's the rest of the committee that is just all over the place, and they're just, I just, I feel like we're moving, shooting at a moving target right now, in the dark, in a room, with it on the other side of the wall. So hopefully we can get some things buttoned down, when they do come up with the RFP, that's really going to give us an idea of just exactly what we're, what we're aiming at. But until they do that, after that point, I think there are some things that the commission can do to help expedite that, and I'll let you guys know as soon as I know something else on that, but that's kind of where we're at right now, but I do appreciate the question.
Yeah, and would you send the commissioners a list of the committee members? Or a link to a?
Yeah, I will do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Frill.
So first of all, on the board appointments, it was asked about earlier, Jeff Bullard, a lieutenant from the Police Department, is the one that sent these over, it's the Casper reentry center, so it's CAC, the people going in there. He was actually trying to get these over to us about a month ago, and that didn't happen, but I don't know if you guys heard, I don't know the second person, the first person I know is Leslie Fritzler, she was probational parole, I believe it was forever. Her husband runs DFS, so anyways, that's a normal thing where they send them over to us after they've done an interview, and they just ask it for us to give our blessing, I guess. Your reference to Delta, you know, I don't think it's really fair until somebody really talks to Dallas, to say the city doesn't care, because they do, and there's just things that can't be said here today, but I know they're talking about it, they're working on it, and more than likely, you'll probably see their involvement. But they haven't gotten to that point for an involvement yet, because they've got to see how it's going to shake out in next year's budget, and whether any of that money can actually be, you know, applied ahead of time. So, but trust me, I do know that they are working on it, I think Peter knows the same thing, so they do care, and I think they're going to get involved, but can't commit, commit them to it right now. And then as far as like pursuing other airlines, Glenn Januska sat out here and talked about speed hitting, and they've been doing everything they can to try and attract other airlines to come in here. So I don't think that that's not happening either, so. The only other thing I had to add, Metro, so I've been going to the Metro Animal Control meetings, and Metro years ago was on a joint powers board, similar to what the Hall of Justice is, and they got away from that, and now that's the direction they're headed again, is they've got every community re-engaged, back into Metro, get it back on a joint powers, and then everything is going to be divided the way it should, again, with every community and entity being involved in it. So just so you know, that's the direction they're going, is to get it back to a joint powers where it's fair and equitable for each entity's use to that, so. They are discussing doing that, because, but let's face it, that thing, I don't know how old that building is, but it is overpopulated. When I ran it, we added a garage onto it, that was supposed to be for vehicles, and that quickly became overflow for cats and dogs. And so same problem, well, the original problem is still there, and so, yeah, I think eventually, they've got to get some things up to snuff now, but eventually that is where they'll head, is a new facility.
Steve, on that, I had a discussion with Legal, I had a discussion with the mayor, and we're, I had a few questions about it, so anyway, Legal was looking at a few things that I wanted them, wanted their opinion on. I wasn't aware that it was formerly a joint powers board, and I would like to get, Heather, I don't know if you have a copy of the original joint powers board. So I'd like to get that. I, I don't know, I mean, in discussions with the mayor, it sounded like they are in kind of a, they have a big problem, and it's an immediate problem. It sounds like that there's a septic issue, clogged drains, and one of the things that they weren't sure about is whether they would want not only to put a building in, but to put infrastructure in along that roadway to connect with existing city utilities. So I'm not sure what that all looks like at this point, it's not, you know, it, I think could be a big deal, rather than a small joint powers board, but we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. One of the things that I, I was wondering about, and this more maybe of Michelle or Tracy question, and that is, can we get some information on the expenditures to the city for Metro contributions from the county, not contributions, but basically when we get the bill, I'd like a report, like a one-pager of what that annual amount's been for maybe the past X number of years, I don't know if that's the last five. Go back till we get to the joint powers board status, you might get with Heather, find out when the joint powers board was dissolved or whatever, and then I think then we'll have some questions about what did the fiscal impact look like to the county at that point. Now, I know everything's changed, we're talking about completely, maybe a different picture with the building and some other things, but, but I don't know what to ask you for specifically, because I don't know what all is there, so if you start with most recent and work backward, I don't think this is a huge priority, but, but yeah, it is a discussion that I think we need to continue with the city.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest also going back, when joint powers was in place, because part of the reason when they, when it dissolved, then you had a lot of entities, and I believe Mills was one of them, that they just went and did their own, and took care of their own issues, and so that, I think you're going to see that the percentage that was actually paid by everybody changed once that joint powers dissolved. And so I think you're going to see our cost went up, but when it was under joint powers, it would have been a lot less.
Yeah, and I can't recall what the formula is that they bill us out at. It's not on number of animals from a jurisdiction or the call area, I can't remember, it's not population-based, because we, but anyway, I can't remember, but I think that there's at least something there that we need to look at, what the existing formula is, because I, I think that there's been, on the time I've been on the commission, some, if not concern, at least some question about whether that's fair and equitable, so lots to look at, but yeah, I'm aware that it's on either the front or the back burner for the city. Commissioner Milne, I don't know if, how your reception is, I see you're still on, did you have any commissioner comments? Okay, he said, "No, not at this time." I think I'll hold my comments on the MRG until the discussion item number five tonight, instead of just repeating myself. But I, I share, I share, I think, the perspective to a large degree of everybody on this, this commission, the importance of that flight, the equitable or lack of equity in the county shouldering the entire burden, that entire sixty percent. Anyway, I'll expound on that a little more tonight. Unless there's anything else pressing, I think we're done with that, and we will adjourn until our regular meeting at 5:30.